Welcome, this March 7th, 2022 Wichita Board of Education meeting is now called to order. We'd like to welcome everyone that's here in the audience and everyone viewing tonight. We appreciate you taking the time to spend your evening with us. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region, where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. If you would join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Tonight's pledge of allegiance is led by the Marshall Middle School JROTC, with Fernando Martin Del Campo, Lily Fountain, Madison Fountain, Viviana Dominguez. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Colors, attention. Forward march. Colors, halt. Left face. Present, colors. Sir, Marshall Middle School color guard, request permission to post the colors.
You may post the colors.
Thank you, sir. Order, colors. Colors, post.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, let's give a round of applause to the Marshall Middle School JROTC. Our JROTCs always do an excellent job and we appreciate them immensely. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, under reports, superintendent's student advisory council.
Good evening, board, it's great to see you all again tonight. My name is Jason Nelson from Northwest High School. At our last Supersac event last Wednesday, we talked about the Esser Grant and how it can improve the students and improve our lives, including college class opportunities for us and any kind of funding we could get out of the Esser Grant for college classes, because, you know, times are rough. And sanitation and upkeeping of buildings, which you guys are doing great. Thank you very much to all our sanitation teams. And I was wondering if there is any news revolving around the Esser Grant that you would like to share with UST 259 parents and students tonight? No? Alright, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Esser Grants are good.
The second good news item?
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent-
Our first, I apologize.
I've got four, so I'll just, I'll just get rolling.
You'll take over for, thank you.
You bet. Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. Tonight makes my WPS heart full and happy to see a room full of people here to support our students. I think we have a lot of parents in the audience this evening. We have students in the audience. We have so many students here tonight, in fact, that we have a whole group of student artists that are waiting in the wings across the hallway to come in and meet you and be celebrated for their scholastic art achievements. We also will recognize several exemplary schools and one amazing educator who has put Kansas on the national map as one of our two national award winners for math and science teaching. And you'll get to meet Mrs. Olsey soon. But first, I think that our Scholastic Art Award students are waiting in the wings and are going to come in. And while that's happening, I believe that you will begin to see their artwork on the screen and have an opportunity to see the amazing work that students have created that has allowed them to earn Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And as you know, these awards are recognized across the country. It's a national competition. And our students who are winners, you will have a chance to see their art at Mark Arts during the display in March. And Sean Chastain, our executive coordinator of fine arts, will tell you more and allow you to meet the amazing students and the art educators that are here to support them.
Thank you, Wendy, and good evening, everyone. Before proceeding, I would like to invite any student or teacher representing tonight's Scholastic Art Awards to join us down front, if you haven't already. And I also want to invite everyone to start viewing our district's award-winning artwork that is on your screens. I also want to thank Marsha Skirfield, WPS Visual Arts Curriculum Coach, for joining me and for also organizing tonight's slideshow. Thanks also to WPS Visual Arts faculty who submitted digital images, and especially to those in attendance tonight. From East High School, we have Shelley Sally and Brenda Lichman and Molly Williams. And from Northeast Magnet, we have Meredith Radke Gannon. So a round for our teachers that are with us tonight, thanks to teachers. As Wendy mentioned, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards is the oldest and most prestigious recognition program for creative teenagers in the United States. Each work is reviewed by a panel of arts professionals for originality, technical skill, and an emergence of professional vision and voice. This year, 1,614 individual submissions plus 24 portfolios were submitted for the Eastern Kansas Scholastic Art Awards. Of those combined, 1,638 entries, 466 student works were selected for the show. Of those 466 works selected, 125 entries from the Wichita Public Schools were awarded. Our award-winning artwork represents 89 student artists guided by 24 visual arts instructors from nine WPS secondary schools. And for the first time in many years, all of our WPS high schools were represented. This year's district winning category percentages include 30% Honorable Mention, 26% Silver Key, 17% Gold Key, and two of the five American Vision nominees. So percentage-wise, everyone, over 25% of the 70-county Eastern Scholastic Art Award winners are from the Wichita Public Schools. While we have an upfront look at these award-winning students and faculty, we also would like to recognize any parents and administrators and family members and friends of those students that are with us tonight in the audience. So, parents, administrators, family members, and friends, I'd invite you to stand or wave as we give thanks for your continued support of these talented students. Please stand. And finally, as we did last month with the banner winners, I want to again thank these student artists for joining us tonight and to briefly come up to the podium and introduce themselves to everyone by sharing their name, their grade, and their school, and their award. So come on up.
My name is Valen Huber, I'm a sophomore at East High, and I have an honorable mention and a silver key.
My name is Kendra Balut, I'm a senior at East High. I got two honorable mentions, two silver keys, and a gold key.
My name is Isabel Mehta, I'm a senior at East High, and I have two gold keys and an honorable mention.
My name is Kalista Govert, I'm a sophomore at East High, and I received an honorable mention.
My name is Serena Chow, I'm a junior at East High, and I received honorable mention.
My name is Ton Nguyen, I'm a junior at East High, and I received two silver keys.
My name is Stephen Hunt, I'm a junior at East High, and I got a silver key.
My name is Malia Subal, I'm a junior at East High, and I got one silver key, one honorable mention.
My name is Jennifer Nguyen, I'm a senior in East High, and I got one silver key.
My name is Nora Reed, I'm a sophomore at East High, and I got two silver keys and an honorable mention.
My name is Rebecca Reimer, I'm a senior at East High, and I received three honorable mentions.
My name is JD Brown, I'm a junior at East High School, and I received two honorable mentions.
Hello, everyone, my name is Missy Darmstetter. I am in 11th grade and I go to East High School. Go Blue Aces, woo, woo! I've gotten a silver key in ceramics.
My name is Deborah Ariola, I go to East High. I am a senior, and I got a silver key.
My name is Liza Potts, I go to East High, oh, I'm a junior at East High, and I got a gold key.
My name is Asha Dance, I am a senior at East High, and I got an honorable mention.
My name is Fatima Bravo, I'm a senior at East High, and I got two honorable mentions.
Hi, my name is Desiree Rocka, Janice Shockloo. I'm a junior at East High, and I got an honorable mention.
Hi, I'm Estelle Massaro, I'm a junior at East High, and I got a gold key for my ceramics.
Hi, I'm Delaney Trammell, I'm a senior at East, and I got a silver key.
Hi, I am Caitlin Mai, I am a sophomore at Northeast Magnet. I won an honorable mention and a silver key for my writing.
Hi, I'm Julia Hazelhorst, and I'm in 11th grade at Northeast Magnet, and I won three honorable mentions.
Thank you again, students. In following this good news item, teachers, or Mrs. Skirfield, or myself will be distributing to each of you a beautiful certificate of recognition prepared by our district's Strategic Communications Division. And finally, many thanks to, once again, to our board and our district leadership for supporting our Wichita Public Schools' excellent representation at this year's Scholastic Art Awards. If anyone here would like to see more, you can review the entire exhibition at Mark Arts, 1307 North Rock Road, until March 26th. But for now, how about a final round of applause for all of these students and these teachers?
Mr. Chastain, do students ever have art sales? There are some really amazing pieces up there, and I suspect there are some adults who would love to have their work in our offices and homes. Extraordinary talent. We will be sharing the slideshow on social media. If you would like to be able to review the images again, and hopefully you will have the opportunity to go to Mark Arts and see our students work for yourself. It was really amazing. Onto a different kind of amazing. We now have the opportunity to recognize the students that are in the audience with us tonight, who are winners of this year's CTE Pathway Awards. It's been a couple of years since we've been able to recognize these young people in person, and it's an honor and a thrill to have them and their parents back in the house, along with Mr. Kelly Beilefeld, who is Executive Director of College and Career Readiness, who will introduce you to the awards and the students who receive them.
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, President Reeser. Wendy joked about, you know, purchasing the art, but I tell my team, so, she wasn't joking. I tell my team, so Marla Hayden, Kathy Mung, and PJ Riley are pathway coordinators for our CTE programs. I tell them often, what makes a CTE class a CTE class is the skills that our kids have, they can take it and go make money with it. So Shelley Sally, and Casey, and Meredith, and Jenny, a lot of these teachers that were here tonight actually teach graphic design and the graphic design pathway, because that is another way you can turn this into a career or livelihood. So, obviously lots of talent. I'm going to go ahead and invite all of our CTE Pathway winners to come, and if you guys would just kind of stand over here, I think that'll expedite this a little bit. It wasn't as organized as Mr. Chastain. That's perfect, yep. So, when I call your name, you can come up next to the podium here. We have some winners who weren't able to be here tonight. So I'm still going to go ahead and read their information and what they won. Any teacher in the district can nominate CTE Pathway Award winners throughout any of our 27 pathways. So these are the winners in each of the pathways, and I'll tell a little bit about their pathway and their future plan. Because the other thing that we do is we try to get an individualized plan of study for every student. And so we're going to talk a little bit about what their goals and dreams are, which are also pretty amazing. So, our first winner, Taylan Coleman, is not with us tonight. She won the Pathway Award for Early Childhood. She is a senior at Heights High School. She was in FCCLA for three years, a two-year star event competitor. And she plans to major in early childhood and become an elementary teacher for Wichita Public Schools. She didn't say that, but I added that on there, so. Congratulations to Taylan. Next up is Alex Gleason. Alex, you want to come up? Alex is the winner in our Computer Programming Pathway. He's a student at Northeast Magnet High School. He plans to attend college and study astrophysics and mathematics. He wants to get a doctorate in physics to work in a research position at a university or national lab. So let's congratulate Alex. Next up is Deasia Gully. She is the winner in the FCCS Pathway. That stands for Family, Consumer, and Community Services. She's a senior at Heights High School. She's been in FCCLA for two years, Vice President of Community Service this year. She plans to attend Avila University in Kansas City and major in nursing, and wants to eventually become a pediatrician. Congratulations, Deasia. Next up is Jesse Hancock. Jesse is our winner in the Fade Pathway. I was joking earlier with Mrs. Bond about all the acronyms we like in education. So, to define this one, Fashion Apparel and Interior Design. She is a senior at Northwest High School. She's been in FCCLA for three years, two of those as the elected president. She plans to go to college and study graphic design, and eventually plans to move to a big city and find a great job. So congratulations to Jesse. Next up is Kenneth Kitchen. Kenneth is our winner in the Restaurant and Event Planning Pathway, or also known as Culinary, and he is a senior at Northwest High School. He plans to attend WSU Tech, and in two years, to become a chef. So let's congratulate Kenneth. Lyndon Lee is our winner in the Finance Pathway. Lyndon goes to Southeast High School. He is in DECA and BPA. He plans to attend Butler Community College for general education, and then continue on to WSU, possibly majoring in pre-law, or continue on to Kansas Law School or Washburn, and pass the bar exam to obtain a JD. So congratulations to Lyndon. Mariana Ledesma is our Marketing Pathway winner. She is a senior at West High School. She is the DECA president and plans to attend WSU Tech for digital marketing, and wants to start her own business. Congratulations. John Paul Lucin could not be with us tonight. He is our winner in the Engineering Pathway, and he attends East High School. He plans to go to WSU for a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, then get some experience from Tech Stronner Spirit, and then continue on to get his master's degree. So let's congratulate John Paul. Soraya Markey is our Teaching Winner. We have a Teach and Train Pathway that is a lot of our favorite pathways across the district, so this is always a competitive one. Soraya attends South High School. She is the president of Educators Rising, and plans to attend Cali County Community College and earn her Associate's in Creative Writing, and then also plans to continue on to Secondary Education or Child Psychology. Let's congratulate Soraya. Alright. Donovan Powell is our winner in the Digital Media Pathway. Donovan couldn't, are you Donovan? Okay, come on over. Donovan goes to Southeast, and he is a winner in our Digital Media Pathway. Donovan completes in JEA, which is Journalism Education Association, and NSPA, which is the National Scholastic Press Association. He receives superior ratings in both of these. He plans to attend WSU for computer engineering, and wants a career in broadcast journalism or the IT realm. Congratulations, Donovan. And our final winner that could not be with us tonight was Priscilla Torres. Priscilla wins the Pathway Award for Law Enforcement. She attends South High School. She plans to attend community college for the first two years of her education, and then to attend WSU and major in criminal justice. So let's congratulate Priscilla. So, as long as the art kids and Mr. Chastain didn't eat all our cookies, our students and parents are invited to the cafeteria for a small reception. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Reeser, if you don't mind, can we pause for a moment so that we don't disrupt our next good news item?
I just want the tail end that's leaving to know that we're just so proud of you all. We're just tremendously proud of you.
Ernestine, if you want to say that again.
Well, they're all gone back, but I'm just real proud of all. We are very proud of all of the students that have shown their awards and shown their abilities. We just are popping our buttons.
Thank you, Ernestine. Wendy, third item?
Our third item tonight allows us to celebrate four, three amazing schools, and one educator who leads one of those schools. I had to make sure and look carefully at my list. With national recognition for their achievements as Magnet Schools, and in two cases, as Leader in the Lighthouse Schools. So you'll have a chance to hear a little bit more about those awards and meet the leaders at those schools as I introduce Jesse Mailn and Phyllis Cotner from our Magnet Department.
Welcome, Phyllis, and Jesse.
Thank you, good evening, thank you so much for this opportunity. And we do want to acknowledge our folks this evening that are doing some amazing things in their building. So we'll start off with Jesse talking about the Magnet School Awards.
So, the Magnet Schools of America is, if you're not familiar, it's a national nonprofit professional association whose members are schools and school districts. They serve kind of as a resource to Magnet School stakeholders around the country. MSA, as I'll call Magnet Schools of America for short, bases all of their work on standards of excellence that they refer to as the Five Pillars of Magnet School, which are diversity, innovative curriculum, and professional development, academic excellence, leadership, and family and community partnerships. Annually, except for last year because of the pandemic, almost every year, MSA presents Merit Awards to a select few of the most deserving schools around the country whose Magnet programming best adheres to these five pillars. Previous winners from Wichita include Allison Traditional Magnet, Earhart Environmental Magnet, McLean Science and Technology Magnet, and as well as Jardine STEM and Career Explorations Academy. This year, the Magnet Department's really excited to celebrate with Jardine STEM and Career Explorations Academy and Principal Malgat, or Principal Kreisman, I get my mats mixed up. Principal Kreisman, as they bring home this award for the third consecutive year, so. So, Mr. Kreisman? And I should also mention that our print shop does an amazing job on those banners. They're very lucky to have them. Additionally, Magnet Schools of America awards Principal of the Year to one principal from each of its regions. Now, MSA has seven regions, and we are Region Six. Our region includes Chicago, Minneapolis, St. Louis, Indianapolis, and Detroit Public Magnet Schools. Unlike the Merit Award, which is very hard to get, but you can get more than one, more than one school in your region can get a Merit Award. But the Principal Award, Principal of the Year, only one principal gets it. And we're thrilled to share that, out of all the candidates from the aforementioned public school systems, Matt Malgat at Earhart Earl Elementary was selected as MSA's 2022 Region Six Principal of the Year. Yeah, Phyllis and I have really enjoyed working with Principal Malgat and watching him take what was already a very successful program at Earhart to just the very next level, it's been awesome. It's very well deserved, Matt. So finally, in addition to the other resources that MSA provides, they also have a very prestigious Magnet Certification Program. Applying for Certification is a year-long arduous process in which the applicant must upload evidence to support the depth to which their Magnet programming strongly encompasses all five of those pillars I was talking about. And this year, we recently found out that Earhart Environmental Magnet became our very first school in UST 259 to be certified as nationally certified Magnet School by Magnet Schools of America, so. Congrats, Matt, I'll have another banner for you for that one, I'll work on it. Yeah, yeah, so can I get the teachers from, can Earhart teachers stand up, please?
Stand up. Thank you. It is my pleasure to do a presentation about lighthouse status. We have two schools that have been awarded that. And I am absolutely thrilled to talk about the lighthouse certification that they have been awarded. The two schools that have received that are Gammon Elementary and High Leadership and International Explorations Magnet. When we think about this certification, it is such a significant benchmark that schools only go for it after four to five years of having Leader in Me process in place. And the evidence that folks are looking for when we talk about this is student outcomes that are truly led by students, implementation of the Leader in Me process throughout the school, and truly being a partner with staff, students, parents, and the greater community. There are more than 600 schools around the world that have earned this status, and so we are so proud to have two of those schools here in Wichita. They are looking at principals, schools administrations really engaged in ongoing learning, and really living the seven habits, and these schools have definitely done that. They work closely with their school community, and you can see leadership reflected in the attributes of the students. In addition, the school identifies, tracks progress, and has- and has very well-established high priority goals, otherwise known as wildly important goals, WIGs. And the students know what those are and how to assess their needs and their progress. So we would like to thank and recognize Jamie Cole and Matt Snodgrass and congratulate them and the staff and the students and families for this outstanding accomplishment of lighthouse certification. Congratulations. Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Not long after we started our strategic planning process and we were all learning about wildly important goals and the ways in which to establish and track them, I remember going into Gammon and having the students school me on how it was supposed to be done. Because they had it all laid out in their notebooks. They knew more about it than we did. It was impressive. So it's a pleasure to close out our good news recognition tonight with an opportunity to celebrate Mrs. Zarin Olsey. I've been working on pronouncing your name correctly. We had the great honor, along with her husband and other family members, of being able to walk into her classroom and surprise her. It's always super cool when people see TV cameras and a whole bunch of grownups coming in and they have no idea why we're there. And it was really terrific to be able to surprise her and celebrate the amazing work that she does at McLean to help kids embrace, understand, and celebrate science education. So without further ado, I am pleased to introduce Michelle Engentron, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, who's going to tell you more about the award and introduce you to our national presidential award for excellence in math and science teaching honoree.
Welcome Michelle.
Thank you, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, and other members of the board. It is my privilege to be here tonight to introduce you to an amazing teacher that we have right here in the Wichita Public Schools. Mrs. Zarin Olsey is a science teacher at McLean Science and Technology Magnet Elementary School. This past month, Mrs. Olsey received the highest honor... Mrs. Olsey, I'm sorry. I neglected to bring you down. Come on down. That is my fault. This past month, Mrs. Olsey received the highest honor any teacher can receive from our government, the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award honors the dedication, hard work, and important role of America's teachers and mentors who support learners who will be future STEM professionals, mathematicians, innovators, science explorers, and our engineers. Nominees complete a rigorous application process that allows them to demonstrate deep content knowledge and their ability to adapt to a broad range of learners and teacher and teaching environments. A panel of distinguished mathematicians, scientists, and educators at the state and national levels assess applications before recommending nominees to the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy. Teachers are selected based on their distinction in the classroom and dedication to improving STEM education. We are very proud to have Mrs. Olsey in our district and we were so very excited to surprise her in her classroom on Valentine's Day, along with her husband, who knows all of the hard work, I'm sure, very closely that in all of the time she dedicates to her students. Mrs. Olsey, I would love to invite you to say a few words and not only give you a good news certificate, but also present you with a banner that you can take back to McLean.
I just want to say thank you to the Board of Education. I have taught in Wichita for 21 years and I'm so grateful for this district. I've received excellent professional development all through the years. And thank you so much to my principal Cindy Graves and all of her support for us. And just love the educators and the students and the educators board and administration that leads us. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Olsey. I just wanted to say that the one thing that distinguishes you between our other teachers, all our teachers, is not only do you have that deep content experience and knowledge, but there's a lot of people who understand math, science, the STEM, but very few people can translate it to the students. And that is a talent that I'm always in awe of. And I wanted to just personally say thank you for your 21 years of service and we are lucky to have you and we thank you. Patrick, next item please.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Welcome Esaw.
Thank you, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. And it's really nice to be able to follow up these great groups of people, the kids that are involved in scholastics. I remember that being a great opportunity in high school and I always loved engaging in that. The CTA pathways. And I really, really appreciate all of the hard work from our magnet teachers and our teachers in general. So thank you very much for everything you've all done. Got a few issues that I want you guys to be thinking about if you can. Wages are something that we're kind of concerned about because we saw the wages rage, but inflations have shot through the roof. And you know, it's a little scary. You've got all these people who really care about the kids and they really care about their jobs and stuff. But when Menards is hiring for $18 an hour and you've got Hobby Lobby and places like that hiring for 21 to sell widgets and trousers and trinkets, I know that that becomes a very difficult thing for you guys to compete with. So I hope that you will reach out to the leaders in Topeka and let those leaders know and remind them of the great work that our educators do to prepare our youth for the workforce. And we need to remind them and people in the Chamber of Commerce that jobs and the Chamber of Commerce is there to support the community and not vice versa. It's not our job to hand out to them. They're going to reap the benefits from our children who come to school and are educated every day. And we should encourage them to contribute more to early childhood education, childcare for workers, their workers, and you know, employees of the school district, the state, everywhere, so that parents can give the time that they need to their children to help to enrich them outside of school and give them a better chance to be well-educated autonomous adults when they grow up. And I know for a long time, we've looked at things as a business model and sometimes we get to talking about statistics and well, why can we do this with this? But I just want everybody to remember when it comes to funding in schools, we're not making widgets. We're making the best people, the best individuals that we can out of our children. And we need to make sure and remember that some kids take a lot more money than others to do that. But the goal is to get everybody to become the best that they can be. So with that, I also want to say that we support Governor Kelly's elimination of the taxes. And we hope that you guys will also send messages to Topeka and let them know that you also support that because that would help many of your customers and their families, as well as many of your employees. And I assume that it would help many of you as well too. Food is a very important thing. It's something that I think we do a great job with Nutrition Services in UST 259 in making sure that our kids are fed, they have full stomachs, they're happy, and they're ready to learn and not worrying about their tummy scrawling. So with that, I really don't have a lot more to say this evening, but I do appreciate the opportunity. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ernestine.
Would you clarify as to what you were referring to about the taxes? What the tax elimination that you're referring to?
Well, there are a few bills in Topeka right now. And one is to immediately eliminate all taxes on groceries.
On groceries?
On groceries.
It's not all taxes, but all taxes on groceries?
All taxes on groceries. And I think that that's a very important tax break to working families. I think that's something that would help all of our families. And we, as an organization, believe that that's something that should happen right away and not be something that happens in a tiered amount. Because whenever we give tax breaks and giveaways to the corporations, we don't do it in a step-down tier. We just do it all at once. So let's flip the script and do it for people. And that's what I mean by that. Anyone else?
Thank you Esaw.
Thank you.
Patrick, next item please.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome Brent.
Hello. President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. This has been a difficult school year for students and staff alike. And this has been true across the nation, not only in our Wichita Public Schools. As we return to a sense of normalcy, the United Teachers of Wichita are focused on the challenges we face to ensure that our students are successful and our educators see sustainable, rewarding career paths ahead of them. Now, we've been reading news reports about fewer college students choosing to study education and teachers thinking about leaving the profession. The fact is that this can be very challenging work and we don't often see the results for a while. But I want to remind everyone that our teachers make a big difference in people's lives. When I arrived at South High School as a freshman, I was a mess. My single mom was working all the time, trying to get us out of the trailer park off MacArthur Road. And I didn't want to be at school and I was failing classes. And I had some teachers take a special interest in me. They saw potential that apparently I could not see. Glenda Butchy, Mary Smith, Teresa Molina, they kept telling me that I need to be at school. I need to do the right thing. And I wasn't listening. Yet. My mom worked to get us out of that trailer park. And we moved into a house right down the street from South. And a month later, she was diagnosed with breast cancer. And those teachers saw us through it. They were there for us when we needed them. And they saved me as a student. And they kept our family connected to that school. When my mom got better, they helped me apply for the Army Scholarship, which I won, and made it possible for me to go to college. When I got to Drake University, I thought, I probably have to figure out this student stuff because all these people are counting on me. And I did. But when I got the call that the cancer was back, I returned to Wichita and after she died, those same teachers were there for me again. And I tell you, you know, I went on to serve in the US Army Infantry. And when I was injured and could no longer continue in the Army, I was devastated. I did not know what I was going to do with myself after a year in the hospital and physical therapy and the like. And somehow, in my head, I thought I could become a teacher. And that might be the way I can serve my community somehow going forward. And that's why I'm here. And I'm reminding you that the number one factor for student success is the teacher in the classroom. I know it personally and I'm sure many of you do as well. So I ask you to do everything in your power to ensure that your teachers feel like they are heard and supported as they go about doing the work to change the lives of those for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much Brent. And we appreciate you sharing your personal story on that. Patrick, next item please.
Next item, Public Communications.
We have three speakers tonight. The first one is Kathy Wilson. Welcome Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the Board of Education. I am Kathy Wilson. My husband is also here with me. We are passionate about public education. We live this passion for public education. John is a professor of education at WSU for 45-plus years, often seen during this time in a Wichita Public School classroom to maintain that connection to practice as well. He also wrote numerous letters, has written numerous letters to the editors supporting education. And I, serving for 38 years as a teacher, principal, district administrator, and college instructor, I served 24 of those years in the Wichita Public Schools. Our son went through the Wichita Public Schools. We continue to demonstrate our passion and support of public education through the Dr. John Scholarship Program at WSU and providing scholarships to other individuals in whom we observe the same passion. I share this with you to give context to my comments. This is our home. This is our district. We are alarmed with what has been thrust upon the Wichita Board of Education the last few months and thus affecting the students, teachers, administrators, and classified personnel of this district. The conversation of the board until last fall was focused on guidelines, policies, recommendations, recognitions of achievement that supported the pursuit of quality education for students and providing a healthy environment. The board was not about personalities and block voting. Before last fall, meetings were not infected with boos and cheers from those attending the meetings. This kind of behavior affects everyone in the district. Bus drivers, secretaries, custodians, lunchroom servers, teachers, building administrators, as well as district support personnel. We ask these people who are in the trenches every day to exhibit professionalism, a commitment to the students and their learning, and civil behavior when such behavior and focus are not being exhibited by a small local group at the board meetings. It is healthy for a district to have individuals speak to represent an interest that supports furthering the education of young people. But the board needs independent thinkers who read, research, survey, those who are affected prior to making a recommendation, and be prepared to provide factual, studied support. Please do not use the Wichita Board of Education as a political platform. You are not here to draw attention to yourself. We do not want to know your name. We want to see evidence of thoughtful and informed discourse. To follow the script, I'm sure your next assignment is to divert the board from real issues to argue about teaching critical race theory, a non-existent course here, then choose some books to ban, then whatever direction politics drags you. Please stop. I wrote a letter to the editor published years ago that in part said, "The public education is the foundation of civilization." I continue to believe that. Public education is the foundation of our civilization. This work is too important to be pulled into useless and unnecessary debates. Please choose students over self. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Next speaker is Bella Bengi. Welcome Bella.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Vila Bengi and I would like to discuss what impact standard reference grading has on high school students and middle school students and why this can lead to a very disastrous future. Standard reference grading, in theory, is a good idea. The main issue of standard reference grading, SRGs, is the power law formula. What the power law does is calculate how much the student has improved. In order to pass a class, improvement needs to be consistent across the board. This sounds good. However, there have been many detrimental and unintended effects of this. However, there have been many detrimental and unintended effects of this formula that the students and teachers have seen during the pilot period. The first graph shows the student's initial score of three, and all scores are consistent except score three, which was 2.68, still leaving the student with the calculated score of 2.6, 2.98. Please note that three out of four scores were above a three, but they still received less than a three for the calculated score. This explains that students are saying, "If you score high on the first assessment, that is nearly impossible to end up with a higher grade because of the results in a flat slope." The second graph shows the student's first score is the lowest and continues to gradually score higher, leaving the student's calculated score at a 3.44, higher than any test score the student has achieved. Please note that this student only had one out of their four scores above a three. The score they had above a three was identical to the 3.22 of the previous student, and yet they received a calculated grade that was significantly above the first student. Students have figured out that in order to get the A, they have to essentially fail the first assessment. They also do not have to turn in the assessments in between because the zeros that will be inputted in the grade book do not count against the student since they are ignored by the formula. Another strategy that the student have started to notice is they need to score a passing grade once at the beginning, and then it is best for them not to turn in assignments after that point in order to maintain that score. This rewards not completing assignments. The students, the third graph shows the student scored a 2.32 on the first test. They did poorly on the second and with the third and the fourth assessment. The student progressively got higher scores. Please note that even though the student's final two assessments were above a three, instead of ending with the desired grade, the slope of the graph became slanted, making it impossible for the student to receive above a three overall. This is why students are choosing not to complete intermediate assignments, which get progressively more difficult. They could score lower on these assessments, which bring down their overall grade. This also illustrates that the calculated grade does not always end up reflecting the final standard performance. Standard reference grading with the implementation of the power law formula affects students negatively because it penalizes work ethic. What I mean by this is studying for their first assessment, and it rewards poor work ethic. High-achieving students now have to purposely fail their first assessments in order to show improvement. This is working against students and their future success. Because of how the power law formula works, we will now have fewer students failing classes despite not turning in many assignments. And we will now have fewer students receiving As even though they are working extremely hard. This will result in a decrease in GPAs for our hardest-working students and ultimately, a loss of thousands of dollars in scholarship money. I plead with you to think about what kind of grading system or formula we want in our schools across the districts to have. Please reconsider the power law formula. Thank you.
Thank you, Bella. And our final speaker tonight is Carrie Sue Vossberg. Welcome, Carrie Sue.
Good evening. I spent a couple of weekends in January at various school grounds. I must say, I was appalled by the amount of trash on the school grounds. It might be a good lesson in respect for the students if they were required to spend time picking up trash at their schools. During the COVID presentation at the board meeting February 7th, Terri Moses was asked who picked up the masks. Her response was the district staff was picking up discarded masks. As you can see from what I dropped off with Patrick, I was out on the school grounds picking up masks during those two weekends. They have been bagged by the school and the district they came from, as well as the date they were picked up. Unfortunately, I was not able to get to all the schools in the district, so a couple of you won't receive any. Anyway, I just thought the board and Ms. Moses should know that the district staff aren't doing a very good job of picking up the masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie Sue. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, Coleman Middle School Environmental Magnet Middle School Proposal.
Dr. Thompson, would you like to introduce this topic?
Yes, thank you. Am I on now? All right. So some years, a couple of years ago, you know, we had some, some folks to come and visit with us to talk to us a little bit about kind of the continuation of services that they wanted to see in some of our magnet school programs. And so we began to kind of explore, there was, we have a pretty popular kind of theme that is out here in our magnet school land. And it is around our environmental, agriculture, those kinds of things. And so we have a lot of schools that, that are, you know, doing the bees, and they're doing lots of other things. And so, in, in this particular feeder pattern, and it was the southeast feeder pattern. And so we have Earhart Elementary School, and then we had southeast with the agriculture. And so we began to look throughout our feeder patterns to begin to see where we can get that continuation. So the children who are in those magnet school programs that do the environmental magnet or agricultural work, and they wanted something for their middle school programming to occur. So that leads us to Coleman Middle School. Coleman Middle School, I'll let them tell a little bit about what they had already been doing. And it was a kind of a natural kind of a fit for this particular middle school to have an opportunity to become and be considered as a magnet school. So I won't tell any more of the story because I have two wonderful colleagues here who will kind of give us a little bit of the history. We have a board policy as it relates to magnet school development, and, and we have followed that policy. It is Policy 12, I believe it is 1217, and we followed that particular policy. And so I will let them kind of walk us through kind of where we've been and how that policy has blended into what we've done. And then we'll have the opportunity to have discussion with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, and welcome, Jessie and Phyllis again.
Thanks.
I'm going to add, I can't do better than that, but I will add that this program support that Jessie Mellon and Phyllis White-Cotner add to all the success that you reviewed earlier this evening comes from their rigor and their expertise, and we're so fortunate to have them. So turning it over to Jessie and Phyllis.
Thank you guys so much. Good evening again, Board President Reeser and Superintendent Thompson and the rest of you all. I am excited again, I know, to, to talk to you about the proposal to have Coleman, currently Coleman Neighborhood School, become an environmental magnet. So as we go into the presentation, we want to give you the background about how we got here and the purposeful planning that happened to move to this point that we're sitting in front of you to talk about this possibility. So, as you can see, we have the recommendation up here just front and center. And we'll start with that and then give you the background about the purpose of Coleman becoming environmental magnet, the steps taken to garner input from staff, from community, and from families, and then the intentional planning that occurred as we looked at the possibility of transforming Coleman. Now, before we jump in, we want to start from a system perspective just to give you the purpose of magnet and talk a little bit about that. One of the things that we want our magnet schools to do is really provide that opportunity for increased choice here in the district. We also realize that the innovative educational methods and practices that happen at magnets are very attractive to some of the parents in our district. We use magnets also to recruit students from diverse backgrounds so that our schools really represent what the district looks like. And of course, the magnets develop those 21st-century skills for our students.
So zeroing in a little bit on some quick facts about our magnet programming. It's kind of a catch-up. So the district has 24 different, 24 magnet schools. We categorize our magnet schools in two different categories. Either you're a neighborhood school. If you're a neighborhood school, you have an attendance area just like any other school does. And within those boundaries, are able to attend without applying. So I'll use Earhart since they were in the spotlight a second ago. Earhart is a neighborhood magnet school. So students that live within their attendance boundaries go to that school just naturally. That's their base school. They don't have to apply or anything like that. But if, but for their open seats, for other students in the district that may be interested in environmental science and be kind of outdoorsy, they're able to apply and get transportation to that school regardless of where in the district they live. And that's the majority of our schools, our neighborhood schools. We do have what we also call pure magnet schools. And pure magnet schools are schools in which everybody has to apply to get in. They do not have an attendance area. You can live across the street from Brooks, and, and you still have to apply if you want to attend that school. And if you look, I have them all listed here. It's Bosick and Cleveland are our only elementary pure magnets. Horace Mann is our K8 pure magnet. And Gordon Parks Academy is pure in their middle school, but their K5 is neighborhood. Our middle school pure magnets are Allison, Brooks, and Mayberry. And of course, Northeast being our pure magnet high school. So the district currently has over 10,000 students attending magnet schools. We break our programming into what we call five themes. There's STEM, which covers all of our science and technology schools. We have our art schools, communication magnets, our leadership magnets, and our, of course, our traditional magnets. Northeast Magnet is kind of a wild card because they have different programs that you can apply for. They have arts, they have health science, they have JROTC, which is, you know, leadership. So a lot of this stuff is represented just within Northeast Magnet itself. They're a little harder to categorize. Our application period starts on the first Monday of October every year. And it goes until the end of January for Northeast Magnet and about the middle of February for all 23 of our other magnet schools. Students are allowed to select three choices of schools that they would like to attend. Their first choice is what runs, was what they run through the lottery. And then if they do not land in randomly selected in that first choice, then they are put on the waitlist for their second and third choices. And if there's an open seat or a place opens up, then they're, then we call them, and, and they take their second or third choice. And as I just mentioned, the lottery is random. There's no criteria for entrance. No one has a better advantage than anybody else.
So we've given you magnets at a system level and kind of the background about why, why they are an important part of the system. We're going to transition now and talk specifically about Coleman and the rationale behind proposing to magnetize this building.
So the benefits and the rationale for magnetizing Coleman, first and foremost, is to just expand the opportunity for choice at the middle school level. Like, we have four 6th through 8th schools and two K8 schools. And some of them have very long waitlists and are very popular. This would add another choice for the public to our middle school choices and, and in turn, decrease the waitlist in size of our, of some of our middle schools that, that have those long waitlists, which ultimately is going to improve, we believe, parent satisfaction and, and that we will have less people waitlisted or not getting into any magnet school at all for that matter at the middle school level. And also, it will, we were told by transportation, will relieve pressure on busing infrastructure because it's going to shift all of those 8:00 AM Coleman routes to a 7:00 AM route. So looking at some numbers, again, to our rationalization. Forty-five Coleman students this year, this recent lottery that was just completed last week, forty-five of those applicants we had came from the Coleman attendance area. Of those 45, 27 of them already attended a magnet school. So we have families, and we have that desire for people that believe in magnets and enjoy magnets, that they like to stay in that pathway. They like to stay in magnet schools. Right now, looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth, excuse me, looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, we have 91 students at Coleman, or, excuse me, 91 students that would be going to Coleman that are attending other magnet schools within the district. So that's potentially, essentially 91 of what could be a population of about 520 at Coleman. So a lot of those students are choosing magnet.
Another aspect that makes Coleman such a viable idea is they already have many things that are in place that really address that environmental theme. So some of the pictures that we're showing you here are some things that are already going on, such as the garden club. They have beehives there that have gone to the state fair. They work with sustainable farming and nutrition, and all of this is happening through their science department, as well as they have lots of property that lends itself to having that transformation toward more of an environmental theme.
So really, our only other model in the district for environmental magnet is Earhart. And Earhart is very blessed because they have, they have, you know, all kinds of old growth trees around them, forests. They have the Arkansas, Arkansas River behind them. And, and their whole property really lends itself to that habitat exploration. Coleman is lucky in that it has a lot of land. It's not quite as diverse as far as flora as, as Earhart is, but we have room, and we're really excited about the prospect of our partnership with the Dick Arboretum in Heston where we have with their prairie ecologist there that is, if, if we're able to go forward, is willing to assist us in planting a tall grass native prairie, up to three acres at least on a piece of this property here that would lend itself to that discovery and that exploration and also have something that Earhart doesn't have, you know. So, so we're excited about that idea of transforming that.
So if there's anything that we know from experience is that when we're talking about a school being a magnet, it's important to have intentionality and to have purposeful planning. We don't get things done by dumping things on folks and saying, "Thou shalt do this." We really need to hear voices from the community, from staff, from families. And so this next part talks about how we really reached out to hear from folks to make sure that this was not a surprise, but let's bring folks along and talk about the possibilities of what this could be if Coleman were a magnet. So we have here a timeline, and if you take a look, that first date is October 15, 2020. So this is certainly not something that we have jumped into. We really have been having conversations, seeking guidance from the district, and doing conversations with the community, with outreach, answering questions, doing research. And so that's just a snapshot of some of the things that have happened in order to get to this point that we're sharing in front of you. When we look at the budget considerations and are thinking to magnetize Coleman, you can see some of the things that we know that would need to have fiscal support. The magnet department does have sufficient funding to support that without having to come from other sources. A lot of it would be expanding what's already present. So when we're talking about the garden, as Jessie mentioned, the land is there for prairie habitat. Professional development would be very important so that the staff understood how to incorporate that theme in, and we can support that as well. One of the things we want to make sure that happens is we call it screaming the theme so that if you go to the school, it looks different. It creates that buzz and that excitement, and kids understand, hey, we're doing something different here. So the money to support, having that theme reflected in and outside of the building is also present in our department.
So as Phyllis alluded to earlier, you can't just shake a stick at someone and tell them they're going to be a magnet school. Through our work in this field over the years, it's very evident that if you don't have staff buy-in and the staff are not excited about becoming a magnet, that you're really not going to be a magnet because, because the magnets start in the classroom. Because, because the magnets start in the classroom with, with the resources the staff puts into their instruction. And so first of all, first off, we wanted to engage Coleman staff and see how they felt about becoming a magnet school. So Teacher Report Week this year in August, we went in and Phyllis and I did kind of a similar presentation that we're doing now about some ideas we had and some possibilities. And talked to them about it and gave them, gave them an anonymous survey that we got seventy-three responses from. The first question said, I'm excited to be a part of the magnet journey with Coleman. Almost all of them said yes, they were, ninety-eight point six percent. The second question said, I am ready to learn about integrating the magnet theme into my instruction. Again, ninety-seven point three percent, a very high percentage, said yes. Now, the third one was about the change in start time because like all our other secondary magnet schools for busing purposes and transportation, Coleman would have to move to a seven o'clock start time. And so we said, the six fifty to two twenty contract day would work for me. Essentially, almost ninety-two percent of employees agreed that that would work for them. So with that, we were very excited and had what we felt significant in employee, staff support. And, but, but also magnet is much more than just the staff and the students. It's the community and the things around it. So we wanted to bring this to the community the best we knew how. We started with presenting this idea to parent, PTOs at, at some of our different schools, mostly Coleman and its feeder schools, its feeder elementaries. So we went to Price Harris and presented that, PTO Minnehaw Coleman. Of course, we talked to them because we haven't got to the timeline yet that we're looking at implementation for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So that would mean today's fourth, fifth, and sixth graders would be sixth, seventh, and eighth graders when this becomes a magnet school. So we targeted those fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Earhart, we went to Earhart, who has a very, very excited parent base. They love their program. They're fiercely proud of that program at Earhart. And they had about twenty people at the PTO and, and they, there was a lot of excitement among the parents about those students being able to continue that environmental pathway through middle school. Adams and Gammon did not have active PTOs, so we set little kiosks at their conferences and said, ask me about Coleman. And that's how we got to there. At these meetings, we gave this little one pager to parents, just kind of an overview that explained what a magnet is, what theme Earhart would be, what that would look like, mentioned the start time, and gave a spot for feedback. In some cases, principals also put it up on their social media pages as well. In addition to visiting those PTOs, we also distributed a parent link a few weeks ago. Call went out to, again, those fourth, fifth, and sixth grade families at Coleman and their feeder schools as well as, as Earhart to gauge community interest in magnet schools and their understanding of magnet. And looking at how they responded there, out of a hundred and twenty-eight responses, we got the plurality from Price Harris and Coleman, Earhart, Minnehaw, and then College Shell at ten, but the majority came from those five schools.
And one thing that I do want to point out is you're looking at the schools that responded. Price Harris is a communication magnet, Earhart is environmental, and Minnehaw is a core knowledge magnet. So again, you can see that those parents that are currently in magnet for elementary still like that pathway and would like to stick with it as much as possible.
Yes, thank you. So one of the questions, the one that I think a lot of the people leading up to this was, was the most, had the most concern with, was asked, if you were contemplating sending your student to Coleman in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year beyond, do you foresee seven AM to two-ten school day being an issue for you? And we had almost ninety percent of our respondents indicate that that would not be an issue for them, whereas eleven and a half percent indicated that it could potentially be an issue.
So here's our proposal and our timeline for implementation. So if we go to the second bullet, you can see here we are in March, presenting to the Board of Education. The next piece, if we get the running shoes to move forward, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, teachers would be planning for school-wide implementation. In October, Coleman would be an option on the magnet application. And then for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that would be Coleman's first official year as a magnet school.
So to summarize, we're, we're proposing, asking for permission, I'm not sure how to phrase it, that we changed the name from Coleman Middle School to Coleman Environmental Magnet Middle School, giving it an environmental science theme, excuse me, environmental science theme, and it would remain a neighborhood school, so would not affect their current attendance base at all.
And again, it is our recommendation that the Board of Education approve the request to magnetize Coleman Middle School to Coleman Environmental Magnet Middle School.
Thank you. Ernestine?
Couple of questions. Would you explain again why that the start time has to be so early? You said it, but it went by pretty fast, so.
The way I understand it best is that with magnet schools, since they have a wider attendance area, sometimes kids have to be bused across town, that we don't have enough buses to all run at eight o'clock. So they're at seven.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Fabian Armandares to come, who is over our transportation so that he can give us a thorough understanding of what this means to be for transportation. We got your, we got your back, Jesse.
Good evening. The way that our transportation system is structured, it's structured by tiers.
I'm sorry, go ahead and identify yourself.
Okay, my name is Fabian Armandares. I'm the Division Director of Operations and transportation is one of the areas that falls under operations. So the way that our transportation system is structured is we go by tiers. So we have seven, eight, and nine AM start time. Each one of those represents a tier. And so we pay for buses by the day. And really, the tier or the start time that has the largest number of bus needs is the one that designates the number of buses that we need. Our second tier, which is eight AM, which is where Coleman currently sits, is our largest tier. It's the one that mandates our transportation cost right now. So by them starting at seven o'clock, we have available buses at seven AM that we can utilize. And so we would be able to do this without having to increase our transportation scope. And it's not just only about cost at this point, but it's also manpower. As you all know, we have a significant shortage of bus drivers. And so at this point, moving them to a seven o'clock start time will actually reduce our transportation scope at eight AM and which reduces our transportation scope in general, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. That does make sense. Thank you. Second question is, the obvious one, is that if we enlarge the opportunity for students from all over the district to come there, will it crowd out some neighborhood students?
Neighborhood students would automatically have their seats there. And then what happens is when the lottery happens, principals let us know how many seats they have beyond neighborhood. So they save seats for neighborhood.
Neighborhoods get first crack.
Yes, ma'am. They're there automatically.
Okay, and so therefore, how large do you expect the population at Coleman to be with the magnet students added as compared to just it being a neighborhood magnet?
So when we're looking at that, a lot of hinges work with that because it would depend also on staffing and availability to staff at different grade levels. So as we move into it that first year, we would have to work to see what does the staffing look like? How many could be added to a classroom before we can say definitely, here's how much we want to grow this school?
Well, that's a part of my question is that are there enough classrooms available at the school to be able to add some more students? So you take the neighborhood and then you add also the magnet students?
Yes. Yes, they have room for additional students at Coleman.
Thank you, Ernestine. Kathy?
Thank you. That was a great presentation and I too feel your excitement and I'm excited for you. I love magnet schools as we had, look, we, we've got great magnet people there. I'm confused about the timeline. Can you help me out?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the school year going to start twenty-two, twenty-three or twenty-three, twenty-four? Help me.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. So next year would be a planning year with the staff and it would be available on our magnet applications in October of twenty-twenty-two for the twenty-three, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, yes.
And if the teachers are going to have to plan for that school-wide implementation in this next school year, is that going to hinder their already stuff that they're doing right now? Is that going to be more workload on them?
Most of the training that we, that we would be doing with them would consist of after-school training that's stipended. So it would, it wouldn't be mandatory. And again, with the, with the response to that, with, to our questions about it and their enthusiasm, I think most would, would come anyway. But, but yeah, I mean, the one more thing, it can always be a question.
And part of what we do is to show teachers how to naturally integrate magnet into the work that they do and how to build that excitement in students. So we know that students learn better when they can connect their curriculum. And it's not just, you know, kind of ideas and facts floating, but you can connect it to something. So I think the teachers, having already had some background in environment, since they have those things they are, are looking forward to learning more about, I see it happening in science. What could this look like for me in my classroom?
So the curriculum has been looked at already to accommodate the theme?
When we do our work, any curriculum can accommodate the theme. It really is doing that just-in-time teaching. So whatever curriculum people have, I can pick it up and talk to you about how to tie it into your theme. It's just knowing and planning, you're going to get sick of me saying this, but planning intentionally so that you know, when we're talking about this, here's how we can make a connection to the environment. I always talk about a story called Beatrice's Goat, right? It's an elementary story, but Beatrice lived in a third world country and it talks about how she had a goat and how that particular animal helped the whole village. Well, can I tie that into the environment? Absolutely. They were suffering drought. Can I tie it into science? Yeah, I could talk about what do goats need to thrive? Can I tie it into leadership and Beatrice being a leader? So it's all in looking at it and saying, let's talk about how we can make connections. That was probably longer than you wanted. I apologize.
Thank you, Kathy. Julie?
I just want to say that I'm very excited as well about this program. I've had the opportunity to be at several of the times whenever the program has been discussed and talked about. It is in District Two, but also my granddaughters, one of them currently attends Coleman and the other one attends Price Harris. So my family is going to be in that group that you, that you surveyed. So we've been talking about this for a long time. We're excited about it. My daughter and her kids are excited about it. And so I'm very much in support of this, very much appreciate all of the work that you all have done. And, you know, the, the only negative that I get is from, you know, my granddaughter saying she's going to have to get up an hour earlier. But, you know, that once, once they get in the swing of that, they adjust.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so anyway, I, I very much am in support of this. And I know we have another speaker, but I would like to make a motion to approve the magnetization of Coleman Middle School.
Thank you. I second that.
There's a motion to approve the, let me get the wording here. Implement the program, magnet program at Coleman Middle School, seconded by Ernestine, moved by Julie. Next speaker is Cheryl.
Thank you very much for the presentation and I am very much impressed with how you have taken this systematically to make sure that everybody knows about it, first of all, and that they have the understanding of, if I don't agree with this, here are things that I can do. And if I do agree with it, here are things that I can do. I have three questions. One is kind of a statement. The staff surveys that you did, it, they, you really have very high percentages of people that have buy-in into this. When you get in that ninety percent range, that's unusual for anything. So I'm really impressed with seeing that higher percentage of buy-in. The start time, again, I was a little surprised that we had almost ninety percent said it wouldn't be a problem. That's very high because middle schoolers aren't known for wanting to get up another hour early. And the budget, I just want to be clear because we are not, as a district, as a board, voting additional budget for this building.
No, ma'am.
You are taking the implementation year budget upon yourself with the magnet school office budget, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then after that implementation year, so the year of twenty-three, twenty-four, the budget to support this program will be what the current budget is for Coleman, correct?
No, we've made at least a three-year commitment to, to come out of our magnet funds to support the, whatever be transportation or supplies that they would need to help implement that theme.
So at the end of that three years, it reverts back to Coleman? Because I know most of our magnet schools do their magnets with their own personal budget.
Sure. Well, not, not necessarily because we do have a, a budget that we, that we use to support all of our magnet schools. So if Dodge, Lyracy Magnet needs books for the whole school or if Brooks Center for Stem and the Arts need a brand-new tricaster for their student broadcasting, then we have a process, a form that they fill out and send to us. And we talk about it and if we think it's something they need that does indeed support their magnet theme, then we take it to Dr. Polite for approval and then we're able to, to give, like, buy them what they requested.
But you've committed a little bit more for the, for Coleman to start?
Yeah, yes, we, we've, we'll use a significant portion of it for the first three years. And, but beyond that, it doesn't mean we're just going to walk away. We'll, we'll continue to help them with things.
Yeah, because you don't walk away from any of our magnets.
No, no.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ernestine?
Well, really, I just want to tell you that my experience was four years ago when I first went to Coleman to visit as a part of the Health and Wellness Committee. The students were so impressive. They were scolding me because I didn't know how to approach the bees. I was being all skittish. And they were telling me the importance about how much of the neighborhood was being pollinated by their bees. And they were telling me how that they were selling the honey. And there was a whole crowd of them that were rushing to try to inform me. And they were almost tripping over each other to be the one that could be my teacher because I was so ignorant on the subject and they were so wise. So for this many years, those kids have had that passion. And I just think it's exciting to have that, that continue and to expand. I know that the whole school is already, I mean, kids that were not even in the bee program were busy telling me as I went out about that, you know, the bees are taking care of. And they told me how many blocks around that the bees went to. They knew it. I didn't. So I think it's a really program that's, that's been long needed and it's really exciting.
Thanks, yeah. That really illustrates, like we said, that they have such, so many good, great things in place that with, with, with our help and we can expand that school, that concept school-wide and it's going to be exciting.
Thank you, Ernestine. Diane?
My question revolves around the budget. So what year are we expecting to see an increase in spending?
From our department? Twenty-three, twenty-four. I mean, we'll spend some next year, probably on stipends for training during the planning year. But as far as buying, buying the supplies and stuff that, that we collectively decide that, that they're going to need, most of that will be for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, and what, do we know what dollar amount increase we're expecting to see?
The, the money coming from our budget, we, looking at three years, we look at roughly a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars spread out over three years. It's very, it's very hypothetical at this point. We've, we've been a- We've, we've been a part of some relatively large grants in the past and, and part of writing for that grant was creating a budget narrative to send to the, the committee that you, that chooses the grants. And that budget narrative is what your vision is when you first want to see something change in a magnet program or something like that. And in reality, as you start to put things into place and things move forward, then you sometimes pivot and go a slightly different direction or something you thought you were going to buy or would be cool for an environmental science theme isn't something they want at all. So it's, it's something that, that we just kind of put together, just to kind of envision what it could look like and what we would be willing to, to spend out of our budget. So, and that's the number we came up with when we looked at field trips, transportation to Great Plains Nature Center, to Conse Prairie, we've looked at.
Hydroponics.
Hydroponics, stipends, of course, stipends for training, of course, the, the native prairie that we, that we would like to plant.
Gardens around the school.
Gardens, beautification, screaming of theme, we call it, so.
So we would, I just want to be clear, we're going to see those increased spending in the, in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year while that is being implemented or will we see that in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
So I'm not sure what you mean by increased spending. It's, it's coming out of the budget that we already have for magnet schools, it's not, right?
It's just to transfer from the magnet school budget.
Yeah.
And, and actually, we just, they would request and then we would purchase those things for them from our budget.
Okay.
Let me just kind of help out just a little bit. So every year, each department gets a budget. And so the magnet school has a budget to support the magnet school programming. Sometimes, I mean, like she, she shared with you how people go about getting those funds so they can request those kinds of things and then they get them. They have the ability within their budget, so for instance, if they want to spend more money on Coleman for the next three years, then they readjust how much is available to the other magnet schools, not that they would suffer any, but they would be able to shift dollars to be able to support themes and they do this all, all the time of who needs what, when they need it, how they need it. So we won't increase their magnet school budget, they will just take the budget that is given to them every year as we would give them in any other year and they will use that, those dollars to readjust how they spend it and the next three years, the priority will be Coleman.
Okay. Do we know what the overall budget is for the magnet schools?
It's in our budget book.
I'm not sure, but I can get you the total of their total magnet school budget. I, I don't know that right off the top of my head.
That's fine.
But I definitely will get it to you.
Thank you, Diane. Cheryl?
Yeah, I just, one piece to add to that, besides your budget that's already established within the district's budget, you also write a lot of grants, don't you?
Um, we have, yes.
Yeah, and so that money is also given out to schools?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're not, we don't have any, like, hardcore plans for competitive grants, but that's certainly going to be an option that we can look at as we.
I know in the past you've written grants and been able to use it for the schools. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve and implement the proposed magnet programming and, and the timeline at Coleman Middle School, creating a W.C. Coleman Environmental Magnet Middle School. It was moved by Julie and seconded by Ernestine.
Mine's freaking out.
We have to have one every night, don't we?
Yeah.
You drew the short stick tonight.
Oh, oh well, it's just blinking.
And while we're blinking, I'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize our two principles, two of our principals at these schools that will be impacted. You guys will stand and, and be recognized from, I think that's awesome.
Motion carries six, zero. Congratulations.
If you hear something in the hallway, it's me screaming for joy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much.
We really appreciate the opportunity.
And we look forward to future reports on, on how the transformation's taking place.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I've got to have my grandson now apply for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yay.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, COVID-19 protocols and mask mandate.
Dr. Thompson, did you have a presentation or did you want to introduce this topic or?
Yes, I just want to, I'll introduce the topic. This was request, agenda item for March the seventh, regular Board of Education meeting to revisit COVID statistics in Cedric County and WPS and to vote again on the mask mandate. This was a request from Ms. Bond and I want to acknowledge that and we are prepared to follow up on that Board of Education request. So without further ado, I will turn this over to my colleague, Ms. Terry Moses.
Good evening, I'm trying to make sure we've got, there it is. Love technology when it works. Good evening, everybody. Terry Moses, Director of Safety and Environmental Services, here to give you an update on COVID. And can I tell you how much I hope this is the last time I do this? We really, really, really hopeful. So to start with, we just want to do a real short overview of kind of where we are. We continue to make sure that safety is a priority as always and want to emphasize that not only with COVID, but with the flu and everything else, healthy habits is a big part of any educational program that we have. We haven't, I was, happened to be in a cafeteria just a couple of days ago and just hearing the repetitive, you know, make sure you take care of things, absolutely so important. Hand sanitizing, cleaning supplies, we still have all of that available and we're still involved in the regular cleaning, including high-touch points. You see the proper disposal of masks there after tonight's speaker, I certainly will get ahold of our custodial department and make sure that that information and the concern that was relayed to you is relayed to the proper people in regards to handling that situation. Air handling enhancements, that's one of the things that we've continued to do. We also, of course, have isolation rooms to accommodate those who do become ill or develop symptoms after arriving for schools and we continue to use our employee hotline. That has been a great asset. I can tell you as an administrator to have somebody who is able to answer questions because there are still a lot of questions out there in regards to COVID and how to handle illness and illness if you're close contact, those kind of things. So that's, the changes that we made after your last meeting when you had the vote in regards to ending the mask requirement at day's end on three-ten, you have them in front of you, you have a couple of protocols, changes that were made there and the main change is, of course, masks will be after three-ten required, not required, but recommended in all district facilities. Additionally, and another change that was made after that meeting was the CDC changed their guidelines into trans, in, in regards to transportation. So our guidelines will follow that in regards to transportation as well. That guideline was before that anything that we did in regards to transportation was mandated by the federal government and even though you voted to remove masks at the, at your table last time you met, you discussed the fact that we could not change that in district transportation. Now that has changed and the CDC has changed their ruling in regards to masks on district transportation, so there will no more longer be masks. An additional change that was made since the last time you met is that the Kansas Department of Health and Environment removed their posting in regards to travel guidelines and prior to that, on our COVID protocols, we had always listed fault, that we would follow KDHE's guidelines in regards to travel. Other countries, even at the beginning of COVID, there was, there were guidelines in terms of other states. Last week, last week, KDHE stated that they're going to stop having that guidance on their site and they're now referring to the CDC and so our protocol will refer to the CDC. We will continue to provide masks for those who wish to wear them. That's one of the things, we do have the supplies, we will have them on buses, we will have them in all of our facilities, so anybody who should wish to wear, wear a mask, we will be able to provide them. The other thing that we've done since the very beginning of protocol is to try to be very transparent in regards to our data and we want to continue to do that. So we will continue to maintain our data being posted on our website through the end of this school year, which would be through May thirtieth of this year. Additionally, we've made the commitment that we will continue to run that employee hotline through the end of this school year, the fiscal year is actually June thirtieth, will continue to, to run that hotline. And I would like to say and give kudos to the HR employees who have given a tremendous amount of time to both collect, maintain, answer the phone calls in regards to that hotline and that data. Several times I've heard in these conversations how important data has been in terms of decision-making and certainly we've been able to provide you with quality data because of the work of the staff with NHR. And speaking of data, just to give you an update as to where we are, as is the case in the county and in the United States, positive cases have dropped tremendously, but they have not gone away. And I think that what we're hearing in the community is that the pandemic may be coming to an end, but there's, was now going to be considered an endemic and that COVID is not going to go away, we are going to still have it in our community. So you can see the data there, last week of reporting was done at three-two or March second and that our student positive cases, we had eleven. Staff, same thing, in regards to the date, March the second, we had five positive cases for staff and as, along with COVID, cases always lower than quarantines because we know we live in community and other people do have COVID. So our quarantine case for students during that last week period, we had forty-seven. And then our numbers for staff quarantines, you can see during that same time period, we had twelve. So to give you just some information about what the current status is and the changes that we made after your vote last time and then the changes that were made both by the CDC and the Kansas Health Department, that's kind of a quick update regarding COVID. And I would be happy to answer any questions or I have people behind me with better information if I can't answer them.
Thank you, Terry. And I appreciate Kathy working with the board officers on this issue. It was her request to do this and we, there was a little confusion on whether or not we needed to put, keep, still put it on, even though we had addressed the issue on February twenty-second. But Kathy, I appreciate your cooperation on that. I think we felt with the bus issue that it would probably be wise to go ahead and, and honor the original request. So Kathy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In light of the recent CDC mask guidelines changing, as Terry you just mentioned, and the Cedric County reporting our percentage at three-point-two percent on Friday, March the fourth, and our very own President of the United States even saying masks can come off, and based on a statement from the CDC that effective February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, CDC is exercising its enforcement discretion to not require that people wear masks on buses or vans operated by public or private school systems, as was mentioned, including early care and education childcare programs. The CDC is making this change to align with updated guidance that no longer recommends universal indoor mask-wearing in K through twelve and early education settings in areas with a low or medium COVID-19 community level. I would like to make a motion at this time to lift the mandate effective immediately right now, instead of waiting until the tenth of March, while keeping in place continued measures of safety with hand washing and the protocol that the district is offering, while offering compassion for those who wish to continue wearing a mask and making available extra masks in each school building.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Kathy, seconded by Diane. Cheryl?
I just want some clarification because I want to make sure I know what, what you're asking. Are you asking us to stop all mask-wearing today or just buses?
No, I am asking for the mandate, the mask mandate to be lifted right now at seven forty-six P.M.
On all masks?
What do you mean, on all masks?
The, you're not just talking about buses?
I'm talking about everything.
Everything.
The buildings and the buses because if we follow the CDC guidelines, which I think is a safe thing to follow, that's what I'm, I'm aligning my motion with.
Okay, so, so just so, again, this is just clarification.
Right, right, right.
I want to make sure I understand. You're really saying, don't wait until this, the end of this week, stop it now?
Yes.
Okay. I have a problem with that and the reason I have a problem with that is because we have clearly told our community, we're going to end on the tenth. And I, I believe strongly that we don't need, we're talking about three days, let's keep the mask on three more days, we will follow what we have told our community we were going to do and, and then we will remove the masks. I one-hundred percent agree that masks need to come off our bus students, just exactly like they do everybody else, but I, I have a problem with moving it up three days. I think it's playing games and I don't like to play games.
Can I ask what your problem is? What's going to change between now and in three?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay.
But, but what's, what would change is we gave our word to our community.
I think this is a bonus. I mean, do you really think someone's going to complain?
It is a bonus.
Cheryl, you went too soon.
What? It is a bonus to those of you who believe that masks should have been taken off a long time ago.
Well, it's the mandate. It's not the mask.
Kathy? Yeah, let's, it's the.
The problem is that I just don't believe that we're doing our community any favors to, for three days.
That's three days too much.
We have people who believe very strongly that masks should stay on kids and we have people who believe very strongly that masks should come off kids. We have set a line in the sand.
Please, there will be no interruptions from the audience or I will clear the audience.
We, we have set a, a line in the sand of we're going to take them off. I believe we need to take them off. I am okay with that, but I am not okay with playing games with our community and telling them one thing and then voting something different when it's three days. Let's keep them on till spring break, then they'll be off after that.
Cheryl, Cheryl, do you want to, kind of like we did on February twenty-second, do you want a alternative motion? Because I tend to agree with you that it should be restricted to the buses.
Okay, I, I can make a motion on the buses. I think the original motion that I made, I would like to hold with that motion with this one exception.
Okay.
This one exception is that I move the district to move all mask requirements for bus students starting March eleventh, which is the same timeline.
I need to interrupt because the. The CDC's deadline for the masks is March eighteenth, which is the middle of our, it is not right now.
Okay. Ernestine, I'll let you make that point after Ju, after Julie.
Yeah, we would, we would stop our masks on buses and everywhere else, the end of the day on the tenth, which literally is March eleventh, three days away.
Thank, thank you. So we have two motions that we'll vote on. We have Kathy's motion that was seconded by Diane, which covers the buses but immediately removes masks. And then we have a second motion, if that motion fails, we will take a vote on Cheryl's motion about removing bus students consistent with the CDC recommendations with, consistent with our February twenty-second vote. Julie has removed it, so Ernestine, it is your turn now.
All I want to say is that I really investigated this very carefully because I was startled when I heard the date of the CDC to lift theirs was March eighteenth. And then I looked at the date of, dates of our spring break and I kind of laughed and I thought, well, that'll work fine because we're not going to have any buses running from the tenth through the eighteenth to make an addition. So the CDC is. So the CDC is saying that they lift all of those on the 18th, including all transportation in the United States and covering school buses. So I, too, am thinking that there is, we don't want to run ahead.
So Ernestine, you're not in favor of the first motion, and you're in favor of the second motion?
That's correct, but I also think, I also call for a vote.
Okay. Diane?
I think my motion needs a second.
Oh, yes. I'm, thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. So we'll have a second motion on the floor by Cheryl and seconded by Julie. Diane?
So it's not just about the masks, it's about all the COVID protocols that we have. And we just got passed out the updated COVID protocols for after March 10th. Oops, sorry. And I have an issue with, we mark out asymptomatic and fully vaccinated or tested positive, and then not fully vaccinated and has not tested positive for COVID. I don't believe we should be treating the vaccinated and unvaccinated any different from one another, because the vaccinated can still get COVID, they can still pass COVID, so why are we separating them out? We need to treat all individuals the same and then treat a positive test. So I'm not in favor of this new protocol under not fully vaccinated and has not tested positive for COVID. It says that individuals that are not fully vaccinated can attend school or work as long as they're asymptomatic, and, this is the part that I have a problem with, consent to daily rapid antigen testing through day 10. But if you're vaccinated, you don't have to do that. I'm not okay with the testing. If they don't show symptoms, they should be able to attend school. If they do show symptoms, you're sick and you should stay at home.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Diane.
That's okay.
Dr. Thompson, if a vaccinated person comes down positive, which is possible, these rules would still apply to them, too, about getting tested, right?
This is what we were given a recommendation from KDHE. This was a recommendation from them. Again, it is a recommendation, and we've used these recommendations, and the directive to me was, is any time that there's any adjustments to KDHE, I was to adjust the protocols. These are recommendations, just as masks are. So if there are adjustments that need to be made, you all need to decide on that and let me know, and we will make the adjustments.
Diane, do you have any more?
Well, I would recommend that we do not adopt this. But we've already got two motions on the floor, and I think we can, are only basically allowed to have one motion on the floor at any given time, so I don't think we can have a third motion on the floor. So I don't know how you want to proceed forward, but...
Well, let me ask this, if Kathy doesn't mind me jumping in here real quick. Let me ask this, is that if we take the votes on, and the reason why we have two motions is because it's fairly common when you don't follow Robert Rules of Order, which is in our policies that we don't, that if you feel the need to make a motion to, if I'm understanding you, to not follow the Kansas Department of Health and Environment recommendations, then we'll entertain that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Kathy?
Cheryl, at the last meeting, when I had made the motion to have the mandate lifted right away, and it was turned down, and then Diane had actually asked you, what data were you looking at that made you insist on the 10th of March? And if I recall correctly, to quote you, you said, "I feel comfortable doing it this way." And I have a real problem with feelings when we're talking about data. And the data shows that we are down 3.2%. Our kids are tired of wearing these masks, and you're saying, "Well, it's only three days, so what?" Well, yeah, it is a big "so what" when these kids and these teachers and these parents are looking for an option, and, you know, one day is too many. So I ask this board, are you wanting to win, or do you care about the people?
Thank you, Kathy. Cheryl?
My response is, I very much care about the people, but we have a divided community. We have people who really want the masks off, and we have people who really don't want the masks off. And we, as a board, made a decision to go with the 10th. I can't see any advantage of three days changing the masks. All we do is upset the half of our people that really want to keep the masks for a long time. It also falls within the CDC pieces, like Ernestine said. The 18th is during our spring break. We will not have masks on our kids or on our buses when we come back, which is after the 18th.
I'm willing to die on this hill.
Thank you, Cheryl. I was just going to add that the one thing that the CDC also did was they put out a color-coded map, and I thought, I'm like with Ernestine, I thought the map was pretty consistent with our original motion, too. And also, it gives us a transition period, which we're now down to, as Cheryl mentioned, three days. Transition period of those people are still very uncomfortable, whether they have a immune compromised situation for a family member or even a student, that we be sensitive to them. Ernestine? So I'm speaking against the first motion and in favor of the second motion. Ernestine?
My reasoning for why we don't change is, one of the biggest messes that CDC has made is that as they found new information, they changed, which scientists do. But the United States public has kept saying they changed their mind, as if they just randomly made a decision. That's the reason that I want to hold firm, is because I do not want them to see the USD 259 School Board as being, well, they changed their mind, that they're just keep being random. I want to make it so that they can know and plan. I also know that there is going to be some little changes that'll happen in the schools over the spring break that'll give them a chance, give custodians and teachers and staff a chance to, if nothing else, get rid of the nasty bucket that has the old masks in. I want to not be based on what we say is randomly changed, and I think our decision before is a reasonable one, and I am going to vote against the first motion and for the second, and I want to suggest that we just do this and be done. And the CDC has made it so that when we come back, this is a non-issue.
Thank you, Ernestine. We will let Diane and Kathy go, and then I will, then I will honor Ernestine's request earlier for a call to vote. Diane?
It's kind of sad when we are behind New York public schools in moving this forward. We have the lowest positivity rate probably ever, with last Friday, 10 people out of over half a million people tested positive for COVID, and it was even less this week. It was so small, I couldn't zero in on it and click on that small of a number on my phone. So I feel it's very sad that we're behind areas that have a greater population, have been hit harder by COVID than we have, and quite frankly, I just find it very sad. I would hope that we would be leaders in our area instead of followers and be some of the last people in the entire country to remove this. So with that being said, I'll, well, I would like to move on after the two motions and talk about the signs and the protocols and after the motions are voted on.
Thank you, Diane. Kathy, last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm hearing tonight that we don't want to confuse the community, and we've already made this decision, don't go back on that, and don't do this. Well, at the beginning of the school year, Dr. Thompson said masks recommended, and then two weeks later, you guys changed your mind. So I am just saying, I'm very disappointed in the direction that this debate has gone into, and I'm very sorry that the kids cannot have their parents choose whether or not that they're going to wear their masks to school tomorrow morning, and I'm very sad that the teachers will not have a choice tomorrow of whether or not to wear their masks. Having said that, I will never talk about masks again.
Thank you, Kathy. And I do want to clarify, no one used the word "confuse," but I just, that's regressing. So the first motion is Kathy's?
Which is to remove masks immediately.
Exactly. And also including the buses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm asking to remove the mandate, not the masks.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That motion fails four to two, two to four. Kathy and Diane voting yes, Julie, Ernestine stand, Cheryl voting no. The second motion now is to remove all masking requirements for bus students starting March 11th, which is consistent with our date that we stated on February 22nd, and that mask will be welcomed if the student or parent so chooses. Is that correct, Cheryl?
That's correct.
And it was seconded by Julie.
Just making transportation consistent with the rest of the district.
Because in my motion in February...
At that time.
That mandate had not been lifted, so we had to follow it, but we don't now.
And that motion carries six, zero. Diane, the floor is yours, if you wanted to make another motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that there be no signs in regards to masks, and that they just be removed from the schools. There's no reason to have signs posted everywhere and all over doors and entrances into the buildings. Masks are just optional after the 10th.
I second it.
Moved by Diane and seconded by Kathy, that no signs be present at any WPS building regarding the usage of masks. Is that...
Yeah, I really just want to move on. I know we had, Cheryl had talked about...
Is your motion to move on?
Move on from COVID. Because Cheryl had referenced signs being posted and changed after the 10th, and I do not support that because we're spending time, money, and energy...
Oops, sorry.
Still revolving around COVID.
Cheryl, put your name back on.
Sorry, Cheryl.
And I think as we're going to see when we get updated on the budget, we're going to start seeing some numbers be tight coming up, and I don't want to waste any more time or energy, and especially money, on COVID protocols. If people do not understand at this point that they can wear a mask if they want to, a sign is not going to help them. So I would just like to move on from this and not have a constant reminder at the doors.
Thank you, Diane. Cheryl?
My logic in putting that in the motion that was in February was the whole issue of students feeling and parents feeling like if they want their child to wear a mask, they can, and they would be welcomed in our buildings. And that's a, could be, not all the time is, but could be a bullying issue. And we want to do everything we can to make every student, no matter what their or their parents' beliefs are, comfortable in our buildings. So if we say welcomed in our buildings, that's, we're going to have some kids and some staff that are still going to continue to wear masks, and that's their choice.
I agree. That is their choice. And that's why it's, we don't need the constant reminders. They can, we need to learn to treat one another with respect again, and the COVID constant reminders have not allowed certain people to move on from that. So that's why I don't support any signs being posted, and if there's bullying issues, then that needs to be dealt with one-on-one. But I assure you, there's been bullying issues on the other side, so we do need to get back to treating one another with respect and dignity, and I think moving on from signs would be a step forward in that direction.
Thank you, Diane.
I'm going to vote against that motion because I think consistently what you see throughout the community, anywhere from public buildings to private buildings to retail, even hospitals, though they're still mandatory at hospitals, is that it's pretty consistent that as long as we're still in a moderate risk, I do also agree with you that there's a day that let's get through this and move on, but to just rashly change what is a consistent approach to masking through signage that's consistent throughout the community seems a little rash at this time. Diane?
Um...
And then we'll vote on your motion.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't see how having less than 10 people testing positive is a rash decision on feeling that that's a major threat right now.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the spirited discussion and debate, and we do have a motion by Diane, seconded by Kathy, and I will have Diane, could you repeat that motion?
To have no signage posted in the buildings in regards to masks or COVID.
All right. Thank you. And that was moved by Diane, seconded by Kathy. Motion fails three to three with Diane, Ernestine, Kathy voting yes, Julie, Stan, and Cheryl voting no. I think that concludes the COVID protocol and mask mandate section of this agenda. Patrick, next item, please.
What about...
I'm sorry.
Next item, consent?
I think she was applying that with the signage. Yeah. All right. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item is consent.
Thank you, Teri. And we all agree, let's hope this is your final report on this topic.
We're ready for that.
Okay. Cheryl, do you have any consent items you need to pull?
I do not.
Kathy?
I only have one. C7. No, 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 not C, but number seven. Yeah, C7.
Yeah, that's correct. Which is the SNAP cloud-based school nursing software.
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy. Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Stan Reiser, no consent items to pull. Ernestine?
Nothing to pull.
Diane?
C3.
The Cox Communication leased dark fiber services. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda except for C3 and C7.
Motion to approve.
Excellent. Julie moved, Kathy seconded.
Sorry, I thought he was...
Yes, this, on all the rest of the consent agenda, that motion carries six, zero. We'll start with Kathy's, C7.
I just, I had a question, and maybe somebody can, and it was answered earlier. When the students graduate or they move, what happens to their medical files that the schools have?
We have a protocol for how we dispose of those things, and they are shredded.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Would you like to make a motion to approve it?
I would. I would like to make a motion to approve SNAP cloud-based school nursing software.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion to approve C7, moved by Kathy, seconded by Julie. That motion also passes six zero. Back to C3, I'm sorry, Diane, you pulled, yes, Diane pulled it. The floor is yours, Diane.
Says the recommendation is to approve $500,000 annually for a term of 60 months. I'd like to remove the word annually and then I can approve that.
That, that is, that is definitely an appropriate request and it, and it makes it very clear what we're doing.
Yeah, it fits more with the contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we have a motion.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Diane to remove the word annually from the recommended, uh, motion, uh, recommended action.
Right after the 500,000.
Right after 500,000. Patrick, is that somewhat clear?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir, and Ernestine seconded it? That motion carries six zero. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Finance, Budget Report.
Dr. Thompson, would you like to introduce this topic?
As my colleague is coming forward, again, as we stated before, we will have budget presentations beginning now until infinity, no, until, until when we approve our budget. And as we promised, we will just continue to chunk this into little pieces so that everybody in our community and on board, on the board, has an opportunity to digest this because it is, um, it's a big feat to be able to understand all of the pieces and components to the budget. And so here is another month's worth of budget presentations along with dialogue and conversation with you all as we continue to move on our journey to approve our budget. Colleague, my friend, Susan?
Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, Vice President Hedrick, members of the board. I'm Susan Willis, District's Chief Financial Officer. And as Dr. Thompson said, this is our second budget presentation in our planning for the fiscal '23 budget year. And I will pause for a moment and, Dr. Thompson, I do have the magnet budget number, if you'd like that. It's $642,000 annually.
Thank you for that.
So we'll go ahead and start and dive right into some terminology. It's always good to use the same language when we're speaking about the budget. And certainly when you're looking at our budgeted numbers, there are, it's a lot. There's a lot to look at. There are, there are a lot of changes that occur during the course of a year. So I wanted to begin tonight, and you'll see this chart several times over the next few months, to make sure that we know what we're talking about. So when the board adopts an original budget, that's the process we're building up to for a hearing in September. You will adopt what we call the original adopted budget, which is based on months and months of preparation. It's part of the, the materials I'm covering with you during these next few months. And it is the, the budget that we send to the state and to the county as far as our overall budgetary plan. Once we submit that original budget, we then, over the course of the next 12 months, continually get adjusted based on our actual count information, based on additional information that comes in from the state as far as different pieces of the funding. So we don't actually get the final adopted budget number until sometime in early June. So there are several things that change over the course of a budgetary year after that original adopted budget in September. So it is important when we're talking budget to know what budget we're referring to, at what time of the year we're at, and what adjustments have, have needed to be made to the budget. So if our numbers are fluctuating, it's typically going to be because adjustments have been made during the course of the year. The legal maximum, which is by law the maximum that can be spent per fund, is dependent upon the revenues that we receive. It sets the, the maximum we can spend, which is driven by the revenues we receive. In some funds, there is additional cash carryforward from the previous year that can also be part of those, those, those new revenues that we get annually. But it is the legal max we can spend. We cannot overspend in a particular fund. We cannot deficit spend. So again, knowing those pieces of terminology is important as we go through these upcoming months of discussion. And then obviously, the budgeted expenditures is the plan. And then actual expenditures occur during the course of the year and we report those as part of our annual reporting process. In the budget book that we prepare and the board approves every year, you have two years' worth of actual expenditures and then you have the budgetary plan. So that's just some baseline terminology as we kind of start into some of the, kind of the meatier parts of budget planning. And so tonight, what we want to primarily talk about is the results of the audit and kind of giving you that first look at some fiscal year '23 revenue estimates. So I, I point out that our, our lovely district logo and I have a specifically, an arrow pointing to the student little stream there because that student FTE is a critical part of the budget process. That FTE, which is, is an acronym for full-time equivalent, which by definition is 360 minutes a week. That's a 1.0 FTE student. We are funded on student FTE. That's the primary driver of the district's general fund and all the weighted funds. So that, that definition of, of student FTE is important. That's different than a headcount. So a student can be a partial FTE for budgetary purposes. Primary example would be a pre-K student. A pre-K student is a .5 FTE. There would be some, there's other limited, uh, partial FT. Most students are, are 1.0. Pre-K is .5 and then there's a few exceptions to that. So, but that FTE is, is, is a big driver in the school finance formula. And that, then those FTE are then weighted for various needs that they may have, whether it's special education, career and technical education, they're an English language learner. Waitings drive additional funding based on that student's needs. As we were planning for fiscal year '22, here are the FTE enrollment trends we looked at. And you've seen various forms of this chart before. But this is showing you the 16, 7, back to 1617, the FTE of the district at that time. And you can see the red trend line through the 1920s school year was relatively consistent in a, in a slight decline. 1920 being a slightly larger decline. Then 2021, that is the first entire school year that we had an impact from, from COVID. Going into '22, we really didn't know, we had no historical trend data to look at to know, are we going to bounce back? Are we going to continue a decline? Are we going to stay flat? Will we make some gains? So from a budgetary perspective, with, with kind of a lack of other information, we budgeted back up to the trend line. We knew there was a risk and, and the board at the time, we talked a little bit about this. We knew that there was some risk in doing that because we really didn't know if that was going to occur or not. I think I told the board at the time, I hoped we never had to use 2021 FTE data to build a budget because that was such a sharp decline from the 1920s school year. And I'm going to end up having to use that, that year, unfortunately. So what has, what occurred as far as the '21, '22 enrollment was a further decline from the COVID year, um, 2021. So what we now believe is we have a new trend line, kind of at a new baseline from the 2021 school year, and now we will slightly decline from that point. That is now our belief. We're, it's a, we're a little data shy here. We'd like another year or two to see what that trend is going to look like. But at this point, there, I don't know of anything that would convince me that the trend line is going to be dramatically different. We might go up a little bit, we might go down a little bit, but I don't know that we'll swing like we have from the 1920 to the 2021. So what does that mean as far as this budget year? We adopted an original budget of $402 million. We will need to make $16 million of budgetary adjustments to the general fund to get down to $386 million and change as far as the, the anticipated legal max in the general fund. The local option budget or the supplemental general fund is also impacted because it is a percentage of the general fund. So that fund will also need to be adjusted almost four and a half million dollars. So our total budget reductions for this fiscal year, fiscal year '22, will be almost $20.7 million. Now that is a significant budget reduction. The, the silver lining here is we knew from a budgetary perspective that that enrollment estimate was probably high. So we did not allocate to programs some of that money. We told, we knew that, we weren't sure that was what was going to happen, so we held it in reserve. We didn't give it to the program managers. So now we'll just pull that back and it, it's not really going to impact anyone's spending plans at the program level because budget held that. So that's not the whole story, but some of what we're able to do, we will do out of the, the budget level reserve that we did not allocate out. Because again, we weren't sure that money was going to actually come to us. So we allocated out something less and held the rest to find out what this number was going to look like. Because we were concerned that's where we would end up and that's where we ended up. Additionally, some other actions we will take as we finish this fiscal year, we will be forecasting the remaining expenditures. So we will take where we're at as far as the salary spend and we will forecast out based on current spending patterns, what the remaining payroll will look like, look at the, the open purchase orders and, and basically do a final forecast of all anticipated spend through June 30. And then we will look at the revenues that we have and what can be shifted around within the funds that we're able to shift, not all funds we can do that with, but the funds that we have that can be shifted around, we will shift to cover the shortfall. Again, we're trying to get through this school year and then we'll make adjustments for fiscal year '23. We may need to come back to you if that is not enough action with some other alternatives that we'll need to look at. Again, it's a little early. We do usually like to get through the end of March with salaries to start to fork, to get those really good forecasts for the last three months of the fiscal year. So we should be able to look at that in April and know if we'll need to come back to you with some additional recommendations. But what this does give us is a pretty good idea of what we might be looking at for fiscal year '23. So we look at this, and I've given you three years of base FTE data here for comparison purposes. So I went back to fiscal year '21. That FTE we used to build a budget was from two years prior because the school finance formula for that base aid, you look at either the previous year or the second previous year and you get the higher of the two. So in fiscal year '21, we used fiscal year '19 FTE to drive base aid. In fiscal year '22, we used fiscal year '20. And in fiscal year '23, we're going to have to use fiscal year '21, which this is the year I had hoped we'd never have to use and now we'll have to use it. Because that, and the reason I didn't want to use it is because that, that decrease in enrollment is a 5% drop. And that's a pretty significant budgetary adjustment for us. The waitings themselves went down 2.5% and primarily in at-risk. That's where we felt the biggest loss. And we anticipated some of that with that change from the free lunch form over to household income survey. And that, that's what happened while the.
Can you explain just a little bit what those two forms are so that?
Sure. So we, the district receives at-risk funding based on the poverty level of our families. And that, that, that free lunch application, it has been for years the primary documentation for at-risk funding. As this, as the, as the nationwide free lunch for all program came into play under the pandemic, you didn't need to fill out a free lunch application because everyone was getting free lunch. So instead, we had to go to an alternate form called the Household Income Survey that established the level of income to determine if you would have qualified for free lunch, therefore would drive at-risk funding if you made that qualification. Some of those forms require documentation from families and some of that we didn't get back. So we didn't, those families didn't actually qualify then under the Household Income Survey. Some of it was just different data sets that people used to fill out different forms and it was new. So we, we did anticipate some drop and we saw some drop. So the, again, not, not overly surprising, but still from a budgetary perspective, a, a significant adjustment for us. So again, at a 5% FTE reduction and on, and trending 2.5% adjustments on the waitings, even with a 3% base aid increase, we would anticipate close to a $5 million reduction in available funds. And we've been kind of used to seeing new funds based on that, that base aid per pupil going up 3%. We won't see that for fiscal year '23. The base aid number, that 44,093, that's locked. That, we are for sure using that number. The waitings we are, we will look at and we're talking to the program managers, particularly pre-K enrollment, I think is kicking off. If they didn't kick off this week, it's going to be very soon. So some of those, we might get some information that would cause us to go back and reexamine. So this is by no means final. We are going to be, you know, working with the, with the various programs to kind of refine some of those estimates. But this is, this is a pretty good indication of what we're looking at for fiscal year '23 as, as in terms of new money, which as you can see, there is no, going to be no additional new money. We're going to have to roll back some expenditures here. So that brings us to kind of what's available in the budget toolkit to adjust for those things without, especially coming out of a COVID year, without, you know, stressing the system more than it's already stressed. So right now, we're looking at some strategic staff reductions through attrition. This is retirement season and we will continue to come up onto more and more teachers who are choosing to retire. This is common this time of year. Teachers certainly who have put in their years of service, look forward to being able to retire. And we will look at those particularly at the elementary level where the enrollment loss primarily occurred and start to not fill some of those positions. Again, in a way that isn't going to put us in a, a risk of chaos. I mean, that's what we are trying to avoid as we are, as we go into kind of a more recovery. And again, we also have federal funding available to support kind of that learning loss. So we have options here. This isn't necessarily a doom and gloom presentation. But we do have to start down this path of making adjustments based on the, kind of a new level of enrollment that we're now, it looks to be somewhat more permanent. We also are going to look at contracts, specifically those that are, that are FTE-based to make sure that we are paying based on this level. And that was going to be ongoing work. We will look at some limited use of one-time funds, particularly ESAR funds, where those can embed in the budget process. We will have to probably limit new initiatives unless there is a funding offset. So if, if someone wants to come to us, I really need something, we're going to say, what are you willing to give up in order to get that something? I'm sure Dr. Thompson's probably tired of hearing me say it, but that's been the conversation for the most part for the last few months is, that's great, we, we can do anything we want, we can't do everything we want. So you're going to make choices as you go through the budgetary process as far as things that we want to do and things that we are going to not do in order to pay for the things we want to do. So that's kind of the, going to be the, some of the change in direction of some of the budget conversations that we have that will get us through these next few months, hopefully, and get us into next year. There is still a tremendous number of unknowns. Again, the, the decision at the federal level on the, on the lunch program, we have not heard that yet. We don't know what the recruiting season's going to look like. Will we be? Will we be able to fill the open spots? We're still, again, very short in paras. We're very short in bus drivers. We have open teaching positions already. So how will we be able to fill those? So we don't want to aggressively reduce if we can't hire some key replacements. So again, this is, this is a tricky time from a budgetary perspective. And we want to be, we want to go carefully through this process and not just start to rip Band-Aids off every which way without knowing some of these pieces of information that are still outstanding. Again, we have a budgetary timeline that you've received. This update tonight, we'll give you another update, probably getting a little bit more into, kind of like you asked about the magnet program, get a little bit more into some of that program information. I think we'll bring to you our Budget at a Glance, our internal document, which is, I think, extremely user-friendly and gets a little bit more into how dollars get to programs. And then, and then May, we talked about that we'll provide you an ESER update as well as some first looks at what we think we're looking at for fixed cost increases. So again, because it's not only just balancing the budget, but we will have other pressures. We are, again, paying fuel, which has gone up tremendously in the last few weeks. We have other inflationary pressures, just like other people are experiencing. The district is feeling that same pinch. So we will have to look at all of those areas and make some determinations on how we're going to adjust. June 30, again, Year in Business Meeting, the Revenue Neutral Decision, which again, we'll give you some background on that in the coming months. And then as we're heading towards an adoption in September. And I just covered that slide, which is what was coming up. So at that point, or at this point, I will go ahead and stop for tonight. Because again, it's getting late in the evening, and I wanted to make sure we at least covered those pieces related to the enrollment. And then kind of forecast where I'm going here in the next, in the next couple of months. So I will go ahead and stand for questions.
Cheryl.
Thank you very much. I have a question on your slide, on the sixth slide. Has this $20 million taken into account audit of our students?
Yes, that, these are the audit adjustments.
Okay.
Yes.
So losing students, as we always do in an audit, that's figured into this $20 million? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. I just had a couple of questions and comments. First off, just for our audience, could you go ahead and define what FTE is?
Yes, the acronym stands for Full Time Equivalent. And for, for school districts, it's 360 minutes divided by basically 60 minutes. A student has to have six hours a day of educational services to be considered a 1.0 FTE. Half of that would be, again, a pre-K type student, which would be, would receive a .5 allocation for funding purposes.
And would you say, if I had to summarize this presentation tonight to the average person on the street, would it be fair to say that we anticipated some of this last year, and we made some adjustments last year? So this number could have been even worse. But basically, our budget is based off of a district of 47,000 students. And we need to adjust our budget to be a district of about 44,000 students? Would that be an accurate summary?
I think that encapsulates the presentation very well, that we will have to start to reduce the budget footprint because the student footprint is down. And appears to be more permanently down and not just a one-year COVID anomaly, which is what we had thought might be the case. And it turns out that's not, at least from this year's count, that's not, that's not the case.
Thank you, Susan, I appreciate that. Are there any other questions?
I have one.
Cheryl?
Yeah, just to bounce off of that, because our numbers are down. But when you look statewide, because usually when we go down, our suburbs grow. Are we seeing that statewide? What are we seeing? Where are those kids going, I guess my question is?
So from speaking with kind of the groups that have been looking at some of the enrollment, the state as a whole, enrollment is down. And I know Dr. Thompson can verify that because she hears it at the superintendent's meetings all the time. Wichita in particular, we did lose some to suburbs, but we also received some from suburbs. So it's kind of, it goes back and forth. We have some that went to private school, but we also received some back from private school. We received some, or we know some went to homeschool. So it's kind of a combination of factors. We are getting more students right now through some of the ESOL programs, particularly newcomer programs. We don't get funded for those, we just have to provide the services. But next year, if they are still with us, we will receive additional funding based on those students. So again, enrollment is, since it only gets measured on a particular date, that date is important for us. And certainly, hopefully, our families understand that that's a really important date to make sure that the students have all the services they need and that we can pay for those to have. Students should be at school every day, we've said that. But certainly, they, from a funding perspective, those count dates are important. Not 920 count dates important. As students come in after that date, it's not that we turn them away. We take them, we educate them, but we don't receive additional funding for those students. Because it is based on a formula that puts a count at a certain point in time.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
Would you reiterate on what are the different programs that we provide that are not fully funded? I know special ed has never been covered as the law says it's supposed to be covered. There are other programs that we provide that are not fully covered, that we just do it because we know that it's the right thing to do. Could you tell what those programs are?
So it's, that's a broad question, but I'll give it a shot. For example, our-
A couple of them.
Right, our early childhood program. The money we receive for early childhood on a per pupil basis does not cover the expenditures it costs to provide early childhood services. So the general fund makes a transfer to early childhood to support the fund, as it does with special education, as it does with the English language learner costs. So as it does with transportation. Most of our major programs do not, are not self-sufficient because the costs exceed the weighted factors that we get. So again, not that those students aren't also general-funded students. So I mean, again, there, some of that makes some amount of sense. But in and of themselves, they don't drive enough weighted resources. They have to get general fund support.
Okay, I won't carry this on any further. Because one of the things is that for years and years, there's been both law that says we have to do it for the students, but there's no money, then, well, there's not enough money to do it right. But we do it, and we do it well. And people move from all over to get into the kinds of programs that Wichita District has. So thank you, that's all.
Diane?
So we have a new downward trend line. And I would like to know what our estimates for on how drastically that's going to go down? What we're estimating as far as that is? Just from 2021 to 2021 and 2022? That's a pretty good decrease. What are we looking at for 22, 23?
So we, as far as what we'll budget for 22, 23, we'll probably estimate about, well, the base aid is set. So we don't actually have to worry about what the actual enrollment is going to be for 22, 23, because that won't impact us for two more years. So I mean, would we, if it was 43,000 and change, we would estimate it's probably around 43,000 flat. The waitings, however, are trending down about 2.5%. We would anticipate that continuing unless information to the contrary is given to us. So for example, I believe our pre-K audited at 855. If we can drive some pre-K enrollment, that will help the budget from a pre-K perspective. If we don't, then that's flat or, or less. So, but as a whole, our weighted enrollment from a funding perspective is dropping at about 2.5%. I don't see anything that would make me believe that trend won't continue.
Okay, and going back to the Coleman Middle School, I support that initiative. But with the numbers, I'm curious from your perspective. I understand how budgets work. But I think they said, I can't figure out where I wrote the number down, $189,000 over three years. And then, you know, the budget, $642,000. So that's a significant portion of that budget. Are we going to get ourselves into a pickle here in a few years with taking those funds and basically spreading those out across all of our magnet programs, which I support? But from a financial standpoint, seeing the trends that we're looking at?
So the Coleman change, and we, believe me, we were involved in a lot of those conversations. Because again, when the superintendent asks, you know, "Can we afford this?", you do your homework, right? You want to make sure that you're able to answer that question. A lot of that Coleman work is going to be one-time costs as far as to get that school to a place where its theme is, again, as Phyllis said, is screaming, you know, environmental. So some of those, that is infrastructure, right? It's doing some of the planting of the different flora and getting it to be an environmental magnet. So I'm not overly concerned that the magnet in their own budget starts to make shifts as far as, for a little while, they're going to say, won't necessarily, we'll pull a little bit here, and a little bit here, and a little bit here to get to 60,000 a year, let's say, to support that change. We were pretty firm on, again, I know families don't like the seven o'clock time, but we were firm, we can't take a transportation increase to do this. And that's why the eight o'clock would not work. Because again, that would be a transportation increase, and we didn't think we could sustain that. So that's why, if you're going to do it, you're going to have to do it at seven. If you're going to do it, you're going to have to support it with the staffing you have. Not, we can't allocate more FTE to you to do it. And you can, you can make adjustments to cover your one-time costs, but we can't provide you additional support. At least we're not, we can't guarantee it's going to be there. And that, they knew that going in and had to make plans accordingly. Okay, thank you.
And I did want to just reaffirm that, Susan, you did use the term, "This is not all gloom and doom." We did, we did anticipate a lot of this last year. And we kept our cash reserves, we boosted up our cash reserves. We're in good shape there. We also know that ESER balances are available for use to sustain and maintain current levels of services. And it, but I agree that we do have to start thinking in the future now. Just like last year, when we were thinking about these problems, this year, we need to think about the future problems of our new enrollment numbers and what all school districts are facing. Birth rates are down. So in the future, we're going to have to right that ship. And I'm hoping that with the use of ESER funds and unfilled positions and a few cuts here and there that are sustainable and don't cut the life out of this district, that we can make this budget work. So I'm still optimistic that we can make this budget work. But I do think we do need to adjust and understand what our new numbers are with enrollment.
Yes, we're not unique, right, in urban school districts? This is, this is a very common problem for urban school districts. So in fact, we actually have fared much better than our urban, some of our urban peers. The fact that we only lost in that COVID year 5% when other districts were down 10, 15, 20%, we held enrollment very well comparatively. And the fact that we've kind of gone back to more of a normal trend when other districts were even worse this year, we've done relatively well. Now, is it, you know, would I choose the trend we're on versus a trend up? I prefer the trend up. It makes budgeting much easier. Because this situation's very different than what we had in the 2008, 2009 years and forward when state aid was reduced per pupil or we were in the block grant and we were fairly stable from an enrollment perspective. This is different. This is enrollment-driven reduction, and therefore, we do have to adjust spending accordingly.
And I, and I agree. You've always done a good job of giving us the reality of the situation. You've never covered anything up or sugar-coated things. So the board is, does need to be aware of the new reality, but it is manageable.
Yes.
I believe so too. All right, thank you. Seeing no further questions, Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Miscellaneous, Superintendent's Report.
No report tonight. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Miscellaneous, Board of Education Report and Requests.
I started at that end last time, I'll start this in next, this time.
As far as reports, I just had, I went to Garden Parks Academy with you, Mr. Reeser and Dr. Thompson. And we were able to recognize three outstanding teachers for the Distinguished Classroom Teacher Award. And the assembly there, and met a bunch of great people there. And great principal, great teachers, great students, and so I enjoyed that.
Thank you, Diane. Ernestine? No report from Ernestine?
No report from me. I'm just glad to be here.
I am too. I also went to, and it was great being there with you, Diane. If you want to check on my schedule and what visits I did, go check my Stan Reeser Facebook page. I can't believe I'm putting it unplugged for my Facebook page.
I was impressed at how many places you showed up on your Facebook page.
Thank you, it was, it's easier to just tell people, go, "Look at that."
Yeah, I have several reports tonight. I also was able in my district to go to a Distinguished Classroom Teacher Award presentation. But the thing that I want to share about that at Southeast, and particularly talking about the environmental program expanding at Coleman here in the near future. I got to meet, as I was honoring the teacher, I got to also meet a new baby lamb that had just been born at Southeast. So that was like super exciting. I mean, it's so great, the things the kids are getting to do in that program. They do everything with animals. And it's, it's the teacher that's in charge of that program that is the one that won the distinguished award. So a lot of great teachers doing great things. And that's a super cool program over there. So as is Earhart and our future things to continue to grow at Coleman. My second report is, I was also, had the pleasure and honor of serving on the team that looked at our honorary cadets in the sixth grade. And that's, it's always fun to sit in on those interviews of the kids in those programs that just do a fantastic job. But I was so impressed by the sixth grade students and their maturity and their answers and just the way they did such a good job in their interviews. We actually had a tie for first place because we couldn't pick the winner. Third, I, I, we had an exciting thing in our district with a professional composer and her son, who was a product of Wichita Public Schools, Mimi and Dan Overholt, that composed a number that was first exhibited at the Honor All-City Choir Program at Century 2. They composed and on, to celebrate 150 years of public ed in Wichita Public School, a song entitled "We Learn in Possibility." So that's a WPS proud with Dan Overholt, product of Wichita Public Schools, and his mother, Miriam Overholt. And then my fourth item is- And then my fourth item is, we did have the Appointed Policy Committee meet in February. And that's an annual thing. We had our meeting in February, and we have no amendments to bring to the board at this time. That team looks at the 100-series policies, just the policies that impact us as board members, not the entire district policies. And the team has no amendments to bring at this time. We also had the benefit of our board attorney being on that team. So he also looked at every, looked over everything for us with a fine-tooth comb as well. So, that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Julie. And I'm glad you mentioned the lamb, because instead of following, don't follow my page. My page is extremely boring and not well-written out. Follow the official WPS Facebook page. They'll have the video of Julie petting that new lamb, and it's much better than my page. So forget my plug, and let's go with, follow the WPS's social media pages. They're really well-run. Thanks, Maria. Kathy?
Yes, I too had the privilege of surprising a nominee for the Distinguished Classroom Teachers Award. That was a lot of fun at Mayberry Middle School. Shout out to Kimberly Who's, yoo-hoo! Okay, good job. I also attended the All-City Fifth Grade Middle School and High School Choir Concert, which was just very nostalgic for me, because I saw my sons up there back in the day. I attended a naturalization ceremony out at the Metroplex, Wichita State, and that was fascinating. And our Hamiltons, JROTC led the colors. And then I went to McLean, and I gave blood. And, not to get you grossed out, but, you know, they put the needle in, and then they didn't get it in the veins, and then they had to manipulate it when it was in there. Just grossing y'all out, so anyway, so I really, really did that. I really did that. Also, I want to do a shout-out. I'm doing a plug for a business locally. It's called Delano's Diner. And the reason why I'm doing this is because Amber Almos is the general manager, and she hires only high school students on the weekends. And I had the, my husband and I went to eat lunch there, and they were all from different parts of our district. And so it was really great to be able to just ask their boss, can they come sit with us for a minute? And they did, and I was able to get a lot of feedback from our students. And it's always, I don't like the food. So that's just always, I think, every student doesn't like the food on one day or another. So I just wanted to give that, and also, I just, under request, asked, how does she become a community member with our district? So that's, here's her card, so I don't know if you need that. And this is a report, Mr. Hudson. Thank you for your report on the custodians with their master certifications. Could you please follow up when they have completed their certificates? Just to let me know that everything's done? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Are we going on to request, or am I just?
You can do, yes.
Okay, what time is it? Okay, I promise will be done before 11:00. Because last week I wasn't. I have been receiving multiple emails from our educators regarding the SRG. It's very interesting that we had her come up and talk about that. I'd like to read portions of them, because I think it's important. The first few statements come from a veteran teacher of 29 years at one of our high schools. And it says, that's not it, that's another one, I'm sorry, usually I'm more organized than this. Okay. He says, "The district this year has been faced with teacher shortages. To encourage retention, the district has provided financial incentives if we haven't quit by certain dates. We appreciate the thought, but throwing money at a problem does not fix it. You must change things at the root of the problem, which is teacher morale. This has been destroyed over the last two and a half years." And I mean, I can understand, our educators have been through a lot, a lot. This email goes on to say, "Teachers are not Marvel superheroes. Many of us got bent beyond our limit last year, a solid month of in-service meetings, remote and hybrid learning models, and so many pivots. Many of us broke under that stress, and this year is actually worse. Part of the agenda that needs to be stopped is the push for SRG, as we heard tonight. All elementary schools have implemented it in 2019 to 2020. Middle schools started to implement it last year, and high schools are piloting it this year. But I believe that we're pushing it back a year. Is that correct, Dr. Thompson, for high school? Yes, okay. "The idea of teaching the mastery of specific standards is absolutely fine, but the rest of SRG is fraught with problems. To do it right requires teachers to make significant changes in planning and assessing, almost to the extent of reinventing the wheel. Given the events of the last two years, with more and more students not caring, SRG will not increase graduation rates. With the bar for passing being set so low, SRG does not prepare them for the rigors of the workforce." And he goes on to say how students don't care, and as we heard this evening, why should they? Because if the standards have been set low, if they don't need to pass the first test to be able to be assessed well, I'm concerned about this. This is also, another educator has said that the district is planning to train the teachers on another new program next year, now that the SRG has hit the high schools. And this teacher has said that they will likely be moving to a different district. We really need to hone in on what the teachers are telling us, because we need to keep them here. And if they're so frustrated and they don't feel heard, I got this email at 11:00 last night. "The way the district is implementing the SRGs, despite what is being said, is meant to bring children to the middle of the grading scale. It makes it far easier for students to pass classes, which I and many others believe is the end goal for graduation rate." Right? The downside is that it makes it very hard for students to get As in the class. Again, as we've heard, as we've heard tonight. I want to ask, have we lowered the standards? Why and how long will they be lowered?
Are you asking for a report on this? Or, I mean, because right now, I'm not, I mean, this is a report session, portion of this, and?
Yes, I would like a report.
Okay, so what are you, I mean, you're reading all that, but what are you asking for me to do?
Are the standards down?
Put it in writing, and then we'll bring back information if what you need.
Okay. And can you educate me briefly on SRGs? And does this come from the state or the local level with the board? Yes, it's all of the above.
Once you write that into a report, I will bring back any information you need about SRGs once you have written it into the report.
Okay. And I just have another question, that given the elementary and middle schools have implemented the SRG, and high schools are being pushed back another year, does this create inconsistency for the district as a whole?
Put that in the report, questions in the report, and then I will bring this back.
Okay, okay. And I just, I just have just a few more questions, and then I will put them in the, for report. Would it be so difficult to return to the former way of standard grading? Have parents ever been sent a survey to evaluate their child's school? The administration and the staff during a school year? Have students ever been given a survey to evaluate their school? And have educators ever been given a survey to evaluate their administrators? And also, having the students with their art, this is phenomenal. And we had the fourth graders with their art for Christmas time. I think that is awesome. I would like to see our students being recognized at every board meeting. I mean, pick a school, pick a grade, pick something that they've done. I think it's important that we recognize them. I mean, you get a kid that gets claps from everybody, that's going to inspire others, that's going to encourage. So I will put that in writing also. I'll be here till 11:00 writing. And then I have one more, and it is actually new business, so I'll be quiet, I'm done.
Thank you. That, I think four of those questions were about SRG, and the last one was about a survey, if I understand correctly. And then the question about honoring, we, yes, that's why we have the good news portion of our?
Every week.
Of every month.
I would like to see students every month.
Yeah, we have students here.
We do, okay.
We have students.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll just say, just put it in your report, and we'll continue to follow through with every request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Cheryl?
I'll write it. Yes, thank you. I was going to say, as my report, I am so thankful that we're able to have students back at our meetings. Because we do value our students, and we literally have kids here almost every single month, along with the programs pieces and everything else that we recognize. So I think that's great, that we finally crossed the hurdle to be able to get students back in here, so we can talk with them. I do have, as you all have noticed, Hazel Stabler is absent tonight. She had to be gone. But she gave me this request that she would like to have as a request. So what Hazel sent to me is, "As a district, what initiatives have we taken to support mental health issues for our students and staff? What are the current programs, and how are they monitored for success? And if possible, a report will be brought back to the board at the April meeting." So I am turning in this request from Hazel Stabler for us as a report.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anything else, Cheryl?
No.
All right. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, new business?
I have some new business.
Ernestine?
Well, it's, it may not be new business, it's to repeat, that as we're dealing with the finances and the amount of time that takes, what we use our staff for, I want to remind that we have a policy that says that if it's going to take a staff member more than, is it two hours, I believe, our staffing, that we need to come back and vote from the board. So if there is a report that's needed, that's going to take like, all day or something, we need to come back to the board and have the board decide if that's an important enough report that we need it to, because that's an expensive use of staff time that we have in our district. So I would just like to remind us that that's a good way that we can do some help with our finances as we come to looking for places to cut, is to make sure that we don't overwork staff. That's all.
Thank you, Ernestine. And I, the way that policy is written is, the superintendent will bring the request back if it takes more than two hours. So once she receives that request from both Hazel and Kathy?
Or any one of us, any one of us.
Yes, or any, yeah, not just, yeah. I was just using the example of the ones from tonight.
Right.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dr. Thompson. Okay. So, is that your new business, Ernestine? Just to remind us about, okay.
Yes, and just, and I'm glad that you had it there in front of you, to share with us.
Well, I was thinking about this around the same time as you, Ernestine.
Well, I just thought, as we're trying to figure out ways to cut, you know, to do some money-saving, that's a good way to save some money on staff time, because we pay our staff well, and their use of their hours is very expensive, and so we want to make sure that we're using it efficiently and well.
Yeah, I actually brought this with me last month as well, so I'm glad somebody else brought up the topic. Kathy?
Yes, this is new business. Totally out of the realm, but in the realm. As we continue to watch the news about what's going on in Ukraine, I've learned that we have two Ukraine students here in our district. And I thought of, what could we, as a district, do to show support for the Ukrainians, which will also show support for those two families? And I thought of this pennies for peace, of having a penny drive at our schools, beginning on the 28th of March through the 1st of April, and just have all the students of all the schools just bring as many pennies as they can, and then we can take them to the bank, and they can cash it. We would need someone to research, how would we get that money to? This is just an idea. I mean, I just feel like we need to do something. And I'm sure that there's a lot of people in our district who feel the same way too. Because we feel so powerless over what's happening, this is one thing that we might be able to do.
Ernestine?
Well, to piggyback onto that, the International Rescue Committee, IRC, is the one that is helping to settle refugees here in Wichita right now. There's 500 refugees being settled, most of them from Afghanistan. The IRC has, they've got a new headquarters. They were over, like, near Park Lane, but now they've moved to a bigger headquarters. And they, I know, because I've talked to someone there, they are absolutely, right now, on the ground in Kiev and in the Poland corridor where they're coming. So that IRC, that is our Wichita connection, it is a, what you call it, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that is already working with our students that are coming in, that are the refugee students that are being put in our schools right now.
So would that be an organization that if we had our schools do a penny drive, pennies for peace, we could then give them the money, and they would make sure that it got to the people of Ukraine?
What they would do is that they would get it exactly to the people that were already, their representatives that are already doing the rescue there in Ukraine.
Is this something, Mr. Chairman, that I need to make a motion about?
Why don't we investigate a little bit?
I was just, I was just thinking, I'm not sure how to do a spontaneous fundraiser from the bench. That's just never come up before. I think we can start with your own personal appeal. You've mentioned the organization, you've mentioned the cause. So I think we could start there, and then let's see if it gels for any further action.
And I offer to contact the IRC and make sure that this is a group that could funnel it directly into the Ukrainian need.
And then our principals would then be notified, is that how it works?
No, I think, I think you make the personal appeal instead of an official act of the board, and then use our time to see whether or not we want to do more. So basically, you can use your social media platform to make this appeal.
For the schools?
I mean, that's really about the only thing I can think of.
No, I don't want to do it for me, I want the schools to do it.
That's what I'm saying. I've never had a spontaneous fundraising, official fundraising thing from the?
It's not that the idea's bad, it's just that, how instant it is.
Well, and not only that, next month, I'll, we'll get a request to make an official, Cheryl, help me out here.
Okay.
Okay, Cheryl, make sure your mic is on first. Is it on? Okay.
Thank you. I think if we put some time to be able to figure out, is this something that's doable, first of all? And if it is doable, we do have fundraisers in our buildings. But I must stand, I don't think as a board, we've ever directed a fundraiser. Our schools take that initiative. We, like, jump rope for heart. They decide at the school level, is that something that's appropriate for their building?
Okay.
And so I think we want to be real careful about saying, we're agreeing to raise money when we haven't talked to anybody, or don't have any information, or don't even know if this is something that our schools would want to do.
This is, I know this is none of my business to interject myself, but I don't have my computer, but we do have a board policy as it relates to that. And that board policy number is?
There is a board, sorry, Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer. There is policy 1410, which is the fundraising and crowdfunding policy. "School-wide fundraising activities for charitable and humanitarian purposes shall be carefully planned, limited, and combined whenever possible to avoid duplication of effort, and to avoid imposing on those being solicited for funds. Generally, only one major fundraiser shall be permitted each school year to secure funds from students for charitable and humanitarian needs. And typically, that's part of the friendship fund process, which has already been completed. So we would have to look outside the policy somehow to do something like that."
And that's why I wanted her to come up and bring the board policy, because it's not about researching either. We have a board policy that tells us exactly what that means.
Okay, you live and you learn.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate your patience with us on that, and it's learning for us too as well. I believe that concludes new business. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
I move the board resource into an executive session to discuss preparation-
I move the board resource into an executive session to discuss preparation for upcoming negotiations between the BOE and the United Teachers of Wichita pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting will resume in this room at 9:30.
I second that motion. We're going to an executive session to, to discuss employer-employee negotiations, come back at 9:30.
There needs to be a vote.
Motion carries 6-0. We'll be back at 9:30.
Wichita Board of Education is reconvening, no action necessary from executive session. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl to adjourn. Cheryl, please.
I apologize. The motion is to adjourn. No action was necessary from the executive session. The motion was from Julie, seconded by, I believe it was Cheryl, to adjourn, but we'll leave it at Diane, if you don't mind. Diane?
No, this is actual vote.
This is actual vote, okay, got it. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Yes.